Start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Euler.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Kirk. And now would our clerk please read our meeting procedures?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, April 19th, 2016. Agendas are available on the table in the back of the meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. However, please note that the board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. When you speak, clearly state your name for the record and be aware there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Keep in mind that the chairman has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. Please place all cell phones in silent mode. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. This is a list of items all to be considered in one motion, but the board would be happy to pull any of them for individual discussion if any of my colleagues would like to do that, or if anyone from the public would like something pulled.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion?
I am in.
Motion Holmes, second Duran. Roll call please.
Holmes?
Aye.
Euler?
Aye.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wigan?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Next is public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can address the board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind that we can take no action. But if there is somebody who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda, please come forward and state your name. See none. I'll move on to supervisor reports. Do any of the board members have any reports?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
See none. We will move to our first department item, which is the minutes of the March 22nd, 2016 meeting when Supervisors Euler and Montgomery were absent.
Move approval, second.
Moved to second to approve the March 22nd, 2016 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Next item is Public Works and Facilities Tahoe City Road Safety Audit Improvements.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board Members.
Good morning.
John Mitchell, Public Works and Tahoe Engineering Division, project manager for the Road Safety Audit Improvements in Tahoe City. Through the development of the Fanny Bridge project and feedback from public accounting, FHWA, Caltrans, TRPA, and Tahoe City Public Utility District, I'll participated in pedestrian and bicycle road safety audit to assess the multimodal safety of Highway 28 through Tahoe City. The RSA focused on balancing pedestrian safety and particular movements through Tahoe City, providing safe pedestrian and bicycle movements within Tahoe City along Route 28, coordinating and leveraging current and planned projects within Tahoe City, and enhancing pedestrian crossing through implementation improvement strategies and countermeasures. From the RSA needed improvements were identified with enhanced Fanny Bridge project and further helped to improve the traffic flow in Tahoe City. We had the opportunity to design and enable these improvements as part of the Fanny Bridge project. We are asking you to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works and Facilities or Designe to execute the irreversible agreement modification for the implementation and management of the road safety audit improvements at a estimated cost of $570,000. This action is exempt from CECL Pursuit and Security Guidelines, Section 15306. This agreement includes CFL Central Federal Lands Highway Division preparing an environmental document applicable to county, state, federal, and state requirements for the RSA improvements.
Project will be funded through the combination of transit occupancy tax of approximately $70,000 and county traffic impact fees of $500,000, and will be budgeted in the 2015-16 fiscal year plan. Do you have any questions? Any question by members of the board? Jen?
Yeah, I did have one question. On the suggested improvements for Jack Pine, I'm having a hard time picturing what eliminate right turn lane from westbound direction.
There's not really a, it's not a proper striped right-hand turn movement, but it does, it does allow the cars to make that movement. It interferes with the bike lane and the pedestrians going through there. So it's just more re-striping in that area. It's pretty minor.
Okay, thank you. I was not really being able to picture a right turn lane there.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the board on this issue? See none. I'll bring it back to the board for consideration.
Mr. Purple?
Moved and seconded to adopt the just discussed resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item B, which is Willera Bridge Replacement Project.
All right.
Good morning, Board Members. I'm Matt Randall. I'm a senior engineer with Public Works and Facilities. Happy to be up here for a Flatlander, I guess, type item. So we're asking for three items on this, which is to approve the award of competitive request for proposal number 10460 to Drake Hagland and Associates for professional engineering services for this project, for the Willera Road Bridge at Dry Creek Bridge Replacement. We're also asking you to adopt a resolution authorizing the Chair of the Board of Supervisors to sign and execute contract number 933 with Drake Hagland and Associates for in an amount not to exceed $2.6 million for the same project. And we're also asking you to authorize the Director of Public Works or his designated execute subsequent contract amendments up to 10% of the contract cost. So this project has been in the works for a long time. It's a, it's a narrow bridge that floods a lot, and it's something we've been wanting to get done. And really, this contract, the RFP and the subsequent contract, is one of the last key pieces for us to make a final push for construction. And our goal is to be in construction in 2018. So the RFP was developed jointly between Public Works and Facilities and Procurement Services, and it was advertised publicly on the county website. We got four responses from that RFP, which were evaluated by a panel of county staff and an outside agency. And then Drake Hagland and Associates was selected as the most qualified consultant unanimously. So after that, we negotiated the contract. And then this contract, actually because it's a federal aid project, went to Caltrans for a pre-award audit where it's tested for compliance with the federal aid provisions and rules. And we successfully made it through that, and which brings us up to today where we're asking you for the final approval. And this project is funded with federal aid through the Highway Bridge Program and then our county traffic mitigation fees. So with that, just open it up to any questions that you might have.
Any questions from board members? I have one. First of all, a former colleague, Bill Santucci, would be extremely happy to hear this presentation. He started working on this over 20 years ago. So congratulations to the staff for bringing it forward.
No, thank you.
But it's a huge project, $23 million, and I see that qualified for the federal --
Right.
-- can fund about 90%. The rest of the funds are going to come from where?
Well, it's the city-county fee program. And it's not on this one because it's the bridge and approached roadway. The bridge and approached roadway, we were able to get Caltrans to agree to fund that portion at 90%, but some of the bikeway improvements will come from the joint city-county fee program.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members? Are there any questions from members of the public? See none. Pleasure to work.
Second.
Motion by Duran, second by Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item C, which is Kings Beach Core Improvements Project.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Placer County. I'm Brian Stewart with the Department of Public Works and Facilities. And it's with great pleasure I'm here today to present for you Kings Beach, the Commercial Core Improvement Project. The Commercial Core Improvement Project consists of two distinct phases now. What we call the core of the core, the middle of town, and then the gateway to the core, which is the ends of town. The core of the core is finishing up here this summer with a few items, and then gateway will be underway with a few actions today with requested actions. So I'd like to jump right into the five C. And we're looking at adopting a resolution to award a construction contract to Disney Construction an amount of $5,714,716 for the construction of Kings Beach Commercial Core Project, Improvement Project Gateway to the core. And also authorize the Chair to execute the construction contract and authorize the Director of Public Works of Facilities or his designated to approve and sign the change orders up to 10%. As I stated before, the Kings Beach Commercial Core Project extends along Highway 28 from basically 267 on the west side up past Chipmunk on the east side. On March 17th, bids were opened. Three bids were received. The lowest responsive bidder was determined to be Disney Construction out of Burlingame, California with the bid. Procurement Services Division and the department have reviewed the bids, submitted and recommended awarding to Disney Construction. No protests were received. The project is environmentally clear. The Board of Supervisors took action on the EIR back in September of 2008. The total cost of this cross-contract is the $5,714,716 with a contingency of 10%. The project is budgeted in the 1516 and the 1617 department budget under the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. It will be funded with state transportation improvement program money, but the way that works is, and previous action of this board was taken back in May with respect to it, but we will be repaid. We will front the money through traffic impact fees, and then we repay in fiscal year 2021 by the state through the STIP program. So, any questions? Be happy to answer at this time.
Jen?
Brian, thank you. Really delighted to see that there really is a light at the end of the tunnel here. I think everybody in Kings Beach is. Just quickly, it's my understanding that Q and D Construction didn't submit a bid, and the only reason I ask is because they did the bulk of the project. And I've had a couple people say, oh, why didn't Q and D get it? They didn't submit a bid. Is that correct?
That is correct. Q and D did not submit a bid.
Okay, because it's not that we didn't love them, or they submitted a bid that was too high. They just had other things on their plate right now.
Yes, according to however their work worked out. They are a primary sub on the Disney contract, so they're still there.
Okay, excellent. And just wanted to take the opportunity, I took my brother through Kings Beach for the first time in over 10 years, and he was absolutely blown away by what it looks like and the changes. And he just said, what a great job that this is. And I really wanted to pass it along to your crew because you guys did so much work on this. Everybody did at the county, honestly. But Department of Public Works and Facilities really just did the heavy lifting on this. So thank you from my brother who hasn't seen it in over 10 years.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from anyone in the public on this item? See none?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. There.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, welcome to North Lake Tahoe. Beautiful day. I do have a question, just for the public here and myself. When it says gateway to the core, does this include any design efforts that were in the Kings Beach Vision Plan and the North Tahoe East Tahoe Basin Area Plan for these gateways? It's not clear if this is just the sidewalks and the curb and gutter. I couldn't figure that out from the report itself, and would just like to know if there is future work that's going to be done at both ends of the gateways. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'd be happy to answer that. This existing contract that we're approving today is, it is the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, so it finishes that out. So we basically go from 267 to Chipmunk with the curb gutter and sidewalk and the complete streets that is in front of you. The other gateway projects are starting the planning phases. Placer County has listened through the visioning plan and seen these things that the community's looking forward to, and we've started that. We've been able to secure a little bit of the TOT funding to start sort of that process, to look at the intersection of 267 and 28, and possibly what we could do as far as mobility and other items through the Kings Beach area. So that's, the planning phase has started, but separate from this one.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else from the public have questions or would like to comment on the project? Please come forward and just state your name.
Morning. Ann Nichols. I was just hoping that they could dismantle the construction storage on the beach, if possible. It's hardly being used. It just has a few things, and it's just such an eyesore. I mean, why they couldn't just move all that junk to, well, not junk, construction materials to, say, the Fox Street corner lot that they have going. So I'd love an answer on that.
Yeah, thank you. Be happy to answer that also. So part of the state recreation area included the county getting some easements to build our advanced treatment systems are in that parking lot. And so there's these huge jellyfish units that they call it "treat the stormwater" and take out the really fine particles. So there's a big series in that parking lot that the county worked with State Parks to get that easement. So they have a few items of work to do in that. They were able, Q and D Construction was able to use that for staging also because it was part of the work. And Q and D's proposing that, they should be wrapped up with all their stuff by the end of June, so we should be fairly close. And that lot is getting some paving and some other items of work completed. So they're not interested in hanging around. They're interested in finishing this project too and getting off that. And the new contract has, is out of that area, so.
Thanks, Brian. Any other questions from the public or comments? See none. I'll bring the items back to the board, the item back to the board for the resolution awarding the contract to Disney Construction.
So moved?
Motion Montgomery, second Duran. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second part to that, Brian, part B, the agreement with Drake Hagland and Associates regarding the core project.
Correct. And instead of giving all the background and stuff, I'll cut to the chase. But from time to time, the Department of Public Works and Facilities hires consultants to help us out in peak times. And Kings Beach being the size of the project and what it is, we needed some help on this. And so we hired some construction management services, engaged with that. So before you today to help finish out the construction of Kings Beach, we're adopting, asking for authorization to adopt the resolution for the Chair to sign and approve a PSA with Drake Hagland Associates for the Construction Management Services of Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project Gateway to the core for $800,000, $28,101. And then asking for the Director of Public Works and Facilities to approve and sign future amendments of 10% of that. To define qualified firms, we engaged with Procurement Services and their expert help to help us get a qualified list. 169 firms were notified of the solicitation. 64 firms accessed the documents, and formal responses were received from five firms. An evaluation panel comprised of Department of Public Works staff, Towne and Truckee, Caltrans District 3 reviewed the responses, and Drake Hagland and Associates was selected as the most qualified firm. Procurement Services received no bid protest. The fiscal cost is $800,000, $28,101 plus a 10% contingency. The project is budgeted in the fiscal year 1617 in the department's budget under the Kings Beach Commercial Core Project, and the funding is also coming from the STIP program and loan reimbursement of AB 3090. Any questions?
Any questions, board members? Any questions or comments from anyone in the public? See none?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing the professional services agreement with Drake Hagland and Associates. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 600, department items, is the Community Development Resource Agency status report on the Tahoe area, Tahoe Basin Area Plan. Crystal?
Good morning. Thank you. Crystal Jacobson, the Placer County Planning Services Division, and I'm here today to provide your board with a status update on the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, and also to request approval of a contract amendment with Ascent Environmental for $36,250 for continued preparation of the environmental document for the area plan, specifically related to a task associated with TRPA Conformance Review and Facilitation as we move forward to adoption. Since your last, or since my last update to your board in January, we have continued to work with the consultants on the preparation of the environmental document, and have worked with TRPA on some final refinements to the area plan as well. As reported in January, staff, the consultants and TRPA had been working together on the EIR cumulative analysis and really addressing cumulative impacts associated with pending development projects, namely the larger projects that are currently under review in Placer County outside of the basin. So the Squaw Valley specific plan and Mardis were really two that we looked at in terms of cumulative impacts. On this topic, we are happy to report that we have sorted through that analysis and the impacts related to out-of-basin projects. And our consultants have submitted an administrative draft environmental document to the county and TRPA for review. So we're currently reviewing that document. That said, a draft environmental document is expected to be released in June for a 60-day public review period. Staff has also worked with TRPA to finalize some refinements to the area plan. These refinements, as I have noted before, are largely reflective of input received on the area plan over the last year or so, since it was released last June. The refinements are minor in nature, largely focused on the county's efforts to expand and enhance transit in the North Lake Tahoe Basin area. Notably, I want to point out that we have recently been working with TRPA to ensure that the area plan is reflective of the county's efforts on the TART Systems Plan Update, which your board will consider today. To that end, we have been working this week, we will be working this week, excuse me. We will post those refinements on our area plan webpage for the public to view. And we will also be outreach to our area plan teams to walk through those refinements with the teams. On that note, in terms of upcoming meetings, we will be conducting two area plan team meetings. One on April 25th at 5:30 in the evening at the North Tahoe Event Center in Kings Beach, and another on May 4th at 5:30 at the Tahoe City PUD offices in Tahoe City. The purpose of those meetings is really to walk the teams through those minor refinements that I spoke of, and then also really to inform the teams of the upcoming release of the draft environmental document. We will also be, we will be providing a very similar presentation to the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council at their regular June meeting. So we'll be informing the NITRAC that the draft is about to be released. That said, in terms of next steps, again, that draft will be released in June for 60 days. We will conduct a planning commission hearing and a NITRAC meeting, both to accept comments on the environmental document. In addition to that, the TRPA will be holding an APC, an ARPIC, and governing board hearings during that same period of time to accept comments. Following the public review period, we will be working with the consultants and TRPA to respond to comments received on the draft, and then to prepare the draft environmental document and the final, any final refinements to the area plan. We expect final documents to be released in November, and we have put together a schedule to be before your board for adoption in December. As we are moving into this final phase of the area plan work program, we have worked, again with TRPA and the consultants, to strategize on some essential areas of support that are needed to ensure a seamless deliberation and adoption process. To further this work program, and as identified in Attachment 1 of your staff report, we have added a task where the consultants will provide assistance and support in facilitating engagement and collaboration with the TRPA governing board and key stakeholders, as well as working with TRPA on the Conformance Review and TRPA findings in order for a successful area plan outcome. To fund that task, we are requesting a contract amendment for $36,250 to the Ascent Environmental Contract, which will be funded from the Planning Services 2015-2016 budget. And with that, we recommend approval of a contract amendment as set forth in Attachment 1 of your staff report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have them.
Jack? Oh, no. Jen?
Crystal, thank you for the update. I want to make sure I heard all those meetings correctly, because it sounds like there were quite a lot of them. There's going to be two plan team meetings. There's going to be a NITRAC meeting in June, not May. The draft report says May, but I think that had to get changed to June because of the, just scheduling with NITRAC.
Correct. I remember you wanting to get that changed. To June.
Okay. Then it will also be going to the planning commission up here at some point. It will be going to ARPIC, APC, and the governing board at the TRPA?
Correct, yes.
And then ultimately, end of 2016, the expectation is it will come to the board. Again, the expectation would be that would be a meeting up here?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Did I miss any meetings?
Well, yes. So during the public review comment period, we accept comments on the environmental document. So there will be no deliberations specifically on the merits of the project. So during that period, there'll be a planning commission held in Tahoe where we'll accept comments. We will also be presenting and accepting comments before the NITRAC. That's not standard practice for all projects, but because this is a county-initiated kind of global, you know, setting policy for the North Tahoe Basin area, we will be holding a meeting at NITRAC so that folks can come at night and we can accept comments at night. So those are the two Placer County-sponsored events, and then, or excuse me, meetings. And then for TRPA during that 60 days, we'll have APC, ARPIC, and governing board. And then following that, once the final comes out, we will be in Tahoe for planning commission and board deliberations.
Okay, so it sounds like a minimum of seven meetings, if not nine?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from anyone from the public on the plan update?
Good morning. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista President and member of the North Tahoe West Plan Team. We are going to meet next week. I was a little bit surprised that you were not given the actual refinement, so the public or team members could come before you today since you're here today, because it's only a week off. So I was disappointed that those refinements weren't provided to you. Thank you for the clarifications, Jennifer, on all Tahoe meetings. We appreciate that we don't have to drive to Auburn, and we know we do have the opportunity to participate in Tahoe City, which I do often. I just want to make sure, I'm not sure when your next, or your winter meeting is. December typically isn't the time you're here. So I'm hoping that if it doesn't fall within the realm of that meeting, that you have a special meeting here for the final. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? Okay, we've received the update, but board's being asked to approve the contract amendment with Ascent Environmental for $36,250.
So moved?
Moved and seconded, Montgomery and Holmes this time. I'll give it to Jen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we will now go to our first timed item, 9:30 timed item, which is Public Works Facilities Presentation, Speedboat Beach Planning. Receive a presentation, and then subsequent to that will be concerning parking restriction ordinance update. So, Mark or Peter, which one are you going to, both going to kick it off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We'd like to give you a briefing this morning on the efforts, the planning efforts that we've been engaged in to manage the use of Speedboat Beach. Now, Speedboat Beach is in the Brockway neighborhood. As you'll see, the map of North Tahoe right there. It's on the north shore of Tahoe. It is right next to the Nevada State Line. And as we zoom in on that neighborhood, you'll see that, you'll see at the bottom of the page, a hatch in dark blue dots, an easement that runs along the entire California shoreline. It's called the Public Trust. Bring that to your attention first. The Public Trust doctrine goes all the way back to the California Constitution. It's an interest held by the state of California for the benefit of the public, and it gives the public the right to access and use the area between the high and low water marks of navigable waters like Lake Tahoe. And it allows for uses like recreation. And so while the Public Trust extends along the entire California side of Lake Tahoe, not all of it offers public access from nearby streets and highways, but the Brockway neighborhood does offer that. It does offer access. The Brockway neighborhood, it's an old subdivision. It was mapped and constructed in the early 1900s. It was built with narrow streets that were standard It was built with narrow streets that were standard for its day, but narrow for today and you'll see the relevance of the narrow streets to our planning efforts here shortly. When it was mapped, however, that map contained a 40-foot wide strip of right-of-way that ran from the intersection of Harbor and Speedboat, I don't know if my laser can light that up, but from the bottom there, the intersection of Harbor and Speedboat down to the low-water mark, there is a right-of-way strip that leads to Speedboat Beach. So, Speedboat Beach, ever since the mapping of the project has had public access, but things have changed in recent years. The use of Speedboat Beach has increased a lot in the past several years. There are some reasons that we know for that. The drought has lowered the water level and so it's exposed a lot larger beach area down there that's not there when the water's up high. Also, social media has popularized the beach where it used to be just known locally. We hear stories of it being even popularized internationally now and even Sunset Magazine has covered Speedboat Beach. It has boulders that stick up out of the water that are very iconic and picturesque and for that reason, we're seeing that increase and with that has come parking problems, circulation problems and seeing some bad behavior along the beach. And so we have engaged the community, that's why we're here today. We have been engaged in about a year-long effort to work with that neighborhood and the community at large to help mitigate what's going on down there and see what we can do. So, the planning efforts began with a $50,000 allotment of our transient occupancy tax. We began to reach out to the community and we've identified four target areas that we have addressed. One is facilities on the beach itself to look at improvements to access, to the stairs that get down to the beach, to the restroom facilities, look at improvements to signage, both the guide signs, regulatory signage and interpretive signage, which we don't have there today, but it does have a rich cultural and natural history on that beach that we would like to interpret and be able to offer that in the future. Also, the rules and ordinances that govern Speedboat Beach, I'll get into the particulars in a moment, but we want to clarify those, we want to look at enforcement of those. And then the most complex part of our planning efforts is parking and circulation and enforcement of that throughout the neighborhood because of the narrow streets. And in just a moment, I'm going to turn that over to Peter Kratz. Peter's team in transportation planning has been working hard on the parking portion of that and the second in this series of items before you will have some specific action recommendations on parking and circulation. So here's what we've done so far. We've had three public workshops, they've been well-attended. The first two were in February and October of 2015. The third one was just last month in March of 2016. As I said, well-attended, I think between 50 and 80 participants. After those meetings, we carefully took notes of the comments that came to us, we printed those out, we circulated them, we've been in email communication between the participants, the people who have signed up on the email list, the representatives of the Homeowners Association and even as recent as yesterday, met onsite with some of you and some of the leaders of the HOA and some of the lakefront residents, so we've been in this continual communication that I think has led to some good solutions to start with. We've also engaged two different local firms to help us with this. PR Designs of Tahoe is an engineering firm, we've engaged them to help with design of the stairs, the ramp, the restroom, those facilities and also Fallon Multimedia out of Reno has helped us greatly with signage, interpretive signage and guide signage and so forth. So to look briefly at that first focus area of facilities, this is a blow-up of that 40-foot wide strip from Harbor down to the water. Those red and yellow boxes are where we have looked for restroom placement. Right now, we're looking toward the middle of that strip, the lower middle, to keep the restroom away from visibility from the street. Right now, they bring in portable restrooms during the summer, they take them out during the winter, so they'll be coming in here in the next couple of weeks. But the community has said that they're interested in a permanent, more picturesque, classier restroom than just the portables, so we'd like to bring that in. We want it to be far enough away that it's not an attraction in itself from the road though and far enough away from the beach that it doesn't damage any of the views from the beach, so that's what we're looking at, that strip along there. That strip would also have guide signage, it would also have interpretive signage and we would post the rules along that strip going down to the beach, so people would be able to see those clearly. These are the stairs that are there right now, they've come close to the end of their life, they're fairly sturdy, but they're really coming to the end of their life, we'd like to replace those with more durable material. And while we're at it, look at the access ramp and the area around the stairs to see what kind of accessibility improvements we could add to that along with just replacing the stairs. And then with the restrooms, as I said, desire to see a more classy style out there, we rolled out several different models at the last public workshop and these were a couple of the styles that were well-received by the community, so we would pursue something that looks a lot like that. And on to the ordinance, here's another blow-up of Speedboat Beach and you can see a red line along the beach that gives you a little closer delineation of that Public Trust area. And you'll also see running down to the beach with a label of Harbor Avenue Access. That access strip, as we looked at before, we classify that as a public recreation area as a public recreation area under the county code, but the Public Trust area is not a public recreation area, so that gives two different regimens of regulation that govern different parts of the beach, one on the access strip and one on the Public Trust. And these are those sets of rules, so along the Public Trust, there are rules that govern it and those are the rules that would govern any place within Placer County. So the normal kind of rules that prohibit trespassing, disrobing, dogs off-leash, things like that apply to the Public Trust, but along that access strip as a public recreation area, there's an enhanced set of rules that govern things like no glass in containers, no alcohol, no fires, loud noise, no dogs at all, that kind of thing. One of the lakefront owners approached us last year and said, would you consider extending that enhanced set of rules from the access strip along the Public Trust? And so we talked to the workshop about that, we asked in a survey form, what does the neighborhood and community think of that? About 60% were not in favor of that, 40% were. We then proceeded to go back to just the lakefront owners, there are four lakefront owners along Speedboat Beach. We asked them the same question, what is your opinion? One owner was in favor of having those rules extended in ordinance fashion and three were not. So with that information, we went to our Sheriff's Office and we said, what's the feasibility from your enforcement standpoint? The Sheriff's Office mulled that over and said, we think it'd be problematic, infeasible or at least very difficult at best and confusing to the public. So for that reason, we are not recommending today an extension of those regulations from the strip down to the beach. However, with signage, part of our mission in this planning effort is to clarify what those rules are and then work on enforcement of what is actually already enforceable. So just briefly, before I turn it over to Peter, I'll show you what we're working on in terms of signage. This is the sign that's there today that welcomes you to the beach and shows you the rules. As I mentioned, we engaged Fallon Multimedia to come up with, this would be a general guide sign that'd be placed down by the stairs that people could get general guidance, it has some elements of interpretation, some elements of rules and a map. And what we asked the last community workshop to do was to take a look at the color schemes, the themes, the icons and look at this for a template, for a schematic template of what we could unify all of the different signage along the beach. We got good feedback about this and we'd be happy to hear your feedback from the Board, but we would intend to go from here and expand this from this single sign to take the colors and elements here into the welcome sign near the top, the entrance, to use the same format to come up with clear signs about the ordinances and rules, where they go, where they apply. And then also work with the lakefront owners who over time have placed their own signs along the beach, along the pier, along their fencing, things like that, for their own ad-hoc reasons and for good reason, no trespassing signs, no dog signs, things like that, but they are kind of ad-hoc, they don't have cohesiveness to them. We'd like to get back to those lakefront owners and say, could we all work together for a unified plan that makes sense, that's clear to the public and have one plan amongst us and a set of signs that the public could follow all the way through. So that's where we're going with signage. And then also working on enforcement, so even as we were out there yesterday, meeting with some members of the Board, some members of the HOA, we saw people walking down to the beach and the rules just seemed to be routinely not paid attention to. So we would like to, we've had some residents come forward with offers of funding for this year, we're also looking at our own existing revenue and working with our Sheriff's Office on agreements and details of how to improve the enforcement for this summer, both on the beach and in parking. And with that, I want to turn it over to Peter to focus on parking.
Thank you, Andy. Peter Kratz here with Public Works and Facilities Department for the record. My part of the presentation, let's click along here. My part of the presentation today will focus on parking and traffic circulation conditions as Andy mentioned in the Brockway neighborhood and subsequent recommendations for improving conditions. As a beginning point in my presentation, I would like to show you the typical county roadway conditions in the Brockway neighborhood as you can see in these two slides. Not unlike other north shore county roads in certain areas, these are narrow roads on the order of 18 feet wide, often without any shoulders and if present, the shoulders are unpaved. The county roads are used here by visitors and residents, just like other areas of the county, to access private property and in this case, a public area called Speedboat Beach. Back in 1994, the county established no parking areas on some narrow sections of the Brockway roads so that vehicular access and mobility could be maintained. However, the popularity of the beach has grown over the last several years, as most of us know, and due to the narrow roadways, limited public parking opportunities, low level of parking enforcement and a low illegal parking citation of approximately $25, impacts to the neighborhood have increased because of those issues. From a transportation perspective, these impacts include, one, high traffic volumes during certain periods of the year on roads established primarily for low-volume residential use and, two, reduced mobility and access for vehicles, including vehicles responding to emergencies. I do believe county staff have done our best to acknowledge these issues through the series of public workshops and our solicitation of public feedback. We have considered various options for improving parking and circulation, but I'll say the fundamental challenge or issue still exists in responding to community concerns on how to effectively improve parking and circulation conditions in the neighborhood. I'd refer to this challenge somewhat as a disconnect between county staff and the community on how to best make some positive changes with respect to parking and circulation. Public feedback in part has galvanized around having staff not continue to exasperate the problem by allowing public parking to continue at its current capacity and instead bring a bigger solution forward that promotes or encourages beach users to access the public area from off-site, whether that off-site option includes public transit, walking, cycling, remote parking or a combination of those. As much of these options are already available and could be feasible, they do not alone, in staff's opinion, eliminate or usurp the public's unexclusive right to use the subject county roads for private and public access. And therein lies the opposing views you may hear from county staff and the public today. In a perfect world, I support developing and maturing off-site access options, but they are not all necessarily implementable or fundable today. So our recommendations that we'll discuss in a minute look to improve onsite conditions while we continue to explore and highlight off-site access options. So in terms of considering alternatives for improvement, I'll refer you to our staff report on pages two and three and briefly summarize the various options we considered. They include increasing the illegal parking fine from what it is today of about $25 to $100, establishing a loading/unloading zone at the top of the walking access point to the beach, modifying current parking restrictions to refine vehicular circulation and discourage unpaved shoulder parking, consideration of a residential permit parking program, conversion of a portion of the roads to one-way travel, developing a shuttle bus program for beach patrons and securing an off-site day-use parking facility or facilities. In light of the pros and cons of each option considered as outlined in our staff report, staff's recommendations include increasing the illegal parking fine from $25 to $100, modifying current parking restrictions, establishing a formal loading/unloading zone, highlighting what current public transit options exist for the public to access the beach and working with our public information office to inform the public on these changes should your Board choose to endorse them. So the next few slides that I'll get to here in a minute help highlight our recommendations and I will also explain options considered by staff or desired by some of the public that we are not recommending. So this slide is part of our recommendation, looks at establishing a formal loading/unloading zone down at the top of the walk for accessing the beach. This is an area of congestion that occurs for people coming down there, unloading boats, that sort of thing, so we want to formalize this area to keep it clear and eliminate the congestion and blocking of access that occurs along Lake Street at the bottom of Harbor Avenue. A formal striped and signed zone designated a loading/unloading zone should help with minimizing the impact that I just described. Our next recommendation is about refining the existing parking restrictions that we have out there today. This consists of modifying our current parking restrictions based on a combination of the following criteria. One, providing more consistency of restricting parking on one side of the street. Two, establishing no parking zones consistent with the side of the road having the highest number of driveways. Three, restricting parking on water quality features and unpaved shoulders where erosion occurs. And four, ensuring the narrowest roadway sections are fully restricted of parking on both sides. Based on these criteria, staff concludes that these proposed parking modifications are an improvement to the existing parking restrictions. Because of staff's flexibility in continuing to evaluate roadway conditions and receive public feedback all the way up until yesterday, the proposed parking restriction map in your board packet and up on the screen here today is not staff's preferred recommendation. We have refined it as shown in my next slide as our final recommended version. So just before I jump to that alternative recommendation, I want to just point out what we have today on the left, what you see today is restrictions typically on one side of the road of Harbor and Speedboat and in some cases Dip Street and Lake Street where it's restricted on both sides because the roads are so narrow there. What we've proposed in your packet is a refinement, again, based on some pinch-point areas and erosion areas that occur from people parking on unpaved shoulders. What we found out yesterday and continued evaluation since we submitted our Board report is a modification to that where we see a better improvement here to, again, these are proposed restrictions that we've outlined for you to consider today. It's still, what it ends up being is still about the same number of cars that can potentially park down there as today, probably a little less, just because we've identified an area in here that is very narrow on Speedboat that we want to restrict on both sides and some areas in here as well. Because of limited parking that residents have next to their homes on this upper part of Speedboat, we're not proposing any restrictions up there, so we don't have anything up there, but we, the narrowness and the site distance of Harbor coming up to Highway 28 makes us recommend that we restrict parking on one side at the top of Harbor. So that's a summary of what we proposed today that will come forward in Part B if you endorse what we're talking about with this recommendation for refining parking restrictions. I'll just go on to say that this parking restriction layout does not include any permit parking based on the limited amount of parking that exists and the narrow roadway conditions that do not support a standard width for designated formal on-street parking. You would typically need a 28-foot wide road to really support, you know, formal on-street parking. We've always said with, we're saying that these are, we're restricting areas where the road is so narrow or where you can't see and not necessarily designating on-street parking, but just trying to make these roads safe for travel and allowing some parking to occur. I'll go on to say some other options we considered. Circulation changes of one-waying a portion of the roads were also considered by staff to better address the narrow roadway conditions in part to designate formal on-street parking. This option was retracted based on the lack of neighborhood support. So I want to move on to some of the things that are not physical in changes that we proposed today. This is really, an additional recommendation is really not to, again, doesn't translate into changes or additions, but to highlight our existing public transit system that exists in the area to bring residents and visitors to and from bus stops near the vicinity of Brockway. The TART stops on Highway 28 closest to Speedboat and Harbor avenues include one 1,700 feet and one 2,000 feet, both east of Harbor, and those are right here over in Nevada. Those are the closest TART bus stops that we have to the vicinity of the neighborhood and the beach. As shown here, public parking exists in Kings Beach as well, where bus stops exist and patrons can ride the bus east to the stops near Brockway. So we have public parking facilities, county public parking lots in Kings Beach that are as the closest. as the closest parking facilities to the Brockway area. In addition, there are multiple stops, as most of us know, throughout North Shore, West Shore, and Truckee that patrons can access and ride to the stops near Brockway. An option not recommended but researched included a dedicated bus program that takes users down to the bottom of the Brockway neighborhood. Two ways to make this happen would be to add to the existing North Shore TART route, and another would be to develop a standalone shuttle program separate from TART. In both cases, there are considerable costs on the order of $36,000 for one season and real challenges with modifying our fixed route service between Incline and Tohoma. A shuttle service separate from TART makes more sense, but both buses and drivers would need to be acquired and funded, along with seasonal operational cost and bus access And finally, as part of our recommendations for parking and circulation improvements today, we are, in terms of increasing the illegal parking ticket fine, county staff proposes supporting a pilot program to pay California Highway Patrol this summer for enhanced parking enforcement. The cost would be approximately $10,000 to pay CHP, California Highway Patrol, to attend to parking enforcement in the neighborhood for 25 days this season. Please realize that an increased ticket price does not translate into increased revenue going to our department. That's a whole nother story about where the dollars go, but the increased citation is intended to act as a deterrent to illegal parking, and along with enhanced enforcement to be provided by the CHP for one season. So, a few final comments I'd like to make before concluding my presentation on parking and circulation would be public comments we received emphasizing the high-traffic volumes observed as beach visitors circle the neighborhood looking for available parking. Suggestions have been made to regulate the situation by posting signage at the top of Speedboat and Harbor when no more parking exists. I think this idea has some merit, but it means securing additional staff resources and funds. Another way to approach it would be to apply time-limited parking to encourage parking turnover, or an online pay-parking reservation system. However, staff is not prepared to propose anything today to address this concern. I'll conclude that our recommendations before you today represent incremental steps forward to improve parking and circulation conditions in the Brockway neighborhood. So, at this time, I'll conclude my formal remarks on parking and circulation, and we'll close out and summarize next steps in the overall master plan process. So, the next slide is a summary of everything we've talked about today in terms of moving forward. So, right now, we're talking about, if we go to Part B and parking and fee regulations are adopted by your board, we would move forward very quickly to make those changes on the ground in terms of signage and striping. At the same time, Andy's group will proceed with engineering on the stairs and feasibility of a ramp going down to the beach from the walkway, and then the engineering and design and permitting required to establish a restroom. At the same time, with these parking changes, if they're adopted, we would work closely with our public information office on the changes coming forward, so the public's aware that the ticket price is going to increase, for example, and to highlight the transit options that exist out there to access the beach. So, moving, then moving forward into the summer and fall of 2016, we would look at, hopefully, installing the interpretive signage and the regulatory signage that Andy talked about earlier today. And then, as funds permit, working on actually implementing the stair and ramp improvements and the restroom. Both those items would probably go in 2017, possibly the stair and ramp improvements would occur later this year. So, with that, I'll conclude my formal remarks, and Andy and I'll be available here for questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter and Andy. So, that's the totality of all of staff report, both parts A and B, correct?
Not, not B. I think what we wanted to do, because B is proposing an ordinance that requires a public hearing, that as long as, based on your dialogue and probably public comments, whether our parking restriction and ticket price increase makes sense, and you endorse it, then we would formalize it under Part B and ask for your approval.
Okay, so what I'll do, I mean, it's hard to talk about one without the other, obviously, so, but I'll give the public an opportunity to comment. So, on the agenda, we're hearing a report from staff as it relates to the conditions at the beach, as well as Part B is the specific consideration of a proposed emergency ordinance. So, I'll let the public speak on both and also let my colleagues make comments and ask questions before we do any of those two things, and then we'll have a specific formal public hearing specific to the parking in the second part of all of that, but keep in mind that we hope that your comments will be efficient and not redundant, and that we'll be able to connect one with the other and make an intelligent decision up here. Okay. So, comments, questions by members of the board. Jim?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Andy and Peter and staff for the tour they gave me yesterday and the members of the homeowners association to give me a good idea of what was going on there. So, I have a couple of comments about signage, parking, and enforcement, and I think, I like the idea that you're bringing forward. My concern is there'll be some young people down at the beach heartily enjoying themselves. And if they, if their vehicle is impeding the roadway or blocking a driveway, and Highway Patrol comes and has that vehicle towed, how do these folks that are going to be not in a very good mood when they come and find their car missing, how are they going to know where their car is, and how far away will their vehicle be towed? Because they may take some actions that wouldn't be in the best interest of the neighborhood.
And I'll just respond to Supervisor Holmes that I think today, if your car is towed, you call CHP to find out what's going on, and they may direct you to what towing company to go to. We could be more clear if these steps move forward today, whether it's signage on the signs down in the neighborhood, on where they go, or at least a good indication so they're not being flung around to find out where their car might be. My understanding typically when cars are towed in the North Lake Tahoe area, they tend to go to Truckee, so not that far, and not typically down to Reno.
Unless you're drunk and you can't, I'm glad.
Did you walk in?
I think it would be a good idea if somehow on the signage you could let whoever's parking there know that your car may be towed to Truckee or Incline Village, and you should consider that before you even decide to park there. Not that anybody may not, some people may not even pay attention to it, but I think it would be a good idea to just give them. And I'm concerned that when, after these young people are enjoying themselves, they may not be in a very good mood when they come back and find their car missing.
Very good.
Jennifer?
Well, I have to start by saying I know a bunch of old people who could be in that same situation, so I don't think it's restricted by age. Couple of questions, Peter and Andy, just if you've thought or considered of any of this. In terms of restrictions on the roadways, one of the things that I've heard that's a major complaint from local residents is that there are tour buses that go down there. Have we considered restricting, obviously with the exception of emergency vehicles, the length of vehicles that can access those roads? So, you know, say, no tour buses, you know, no passenger vans above a certain length? Have we considered that, or is that something we could include in an ordinance if we chose to?
We have not considered it. I'm not sure if we would need to put it, formalize it in an ordinance or not, or whether we could just sign it. I mean, I might need to engage with staff on that.
Okay, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up earlier. It literally just occurred to me during the conversation that we're having today.
Right.
So, I like the idea of restricting parking at identified points because, you know, unfortunately, as we saw a couple of weeks ago in our conversations about Lake Clementine Road and some of the roads around Hidden Falls, the next step is no parking for anybody, which isn't where we want to end up here. So, we want to do all we can to restrict parking, make it clear and understandable for folks, so that they really do, as Jim raised in his point, understand the implications if they make some bad choices. Also, wanted to really reiterate the fact that the increased ticketing amounts, those increased citations don't go to the county, they go to the state of California. So, if we were, if we were to do that, well, it would certainly be a disincentive for people to park illegally. It's not an incentive for Placer County to earn money. That's something that I've heard from folks, and I just want to make it very clear that we don't actually see those dollars.
That's correct.
On the sign, the sign was beautiful. I do have one question, which is, is it consistent with the resort associations wayfinding signs that we've, and they've spent quite a lot of public tax dollars on creating and designing, and if not, we should probably consider that because we really are trying to work toward that consistent signage throughout eastern Placer County? I love the idea of potentially posting signs at the top when parking is full, but again, that would require, as you pointed out, someone in either code or parking compliance, which is, as you know, something I've been agitating for, for the past seven and a half years. I still think that there's a position up here that would be halftime code enforcement, or, excuse me, code compliance, halftime parking compliance, and that's throughout eastern Placer County. So, I'm again going to, you know, say, yes, let's look at funding that position and figuring out a way to make that work. And then, last but not least, have we considered a bus stop at, eastbound, at the top of 28 and Speedboat, where we could actually have a TART stop where people could get off and walk to the beach rather than driving to the beach? They would still have to walk back up to the westbound stop in Nevada at the casino, but there is at least a protected pedestrian stoplight and crossing there, but I think that could actually incentivize people to walk to the beach rather than drive. Those are all my comments for right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? I've seen, and I'm only going to comment that about 10 minutes ago, I figured I'd never have another chance to do this, but I became a brand-new uncle again for a nephew. Theodore Paul, this solidifies that my brother, for sure, will almost certainly have more grandchildren than I have, but with that, we'll get back to the hearing. So, now, we're going to open it up to comments from the public, but this is not the official public hearing as it relates to the zoning ordinance, so if anyone from the public could like to come forward and comment generally on this, keeping in mind that we're going to be taking up specifics about the parking part next. Ellie?
Good morning. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident, North Shore. I visit the beach. I want to thank the board members that toured so they have a better understanding why the homeowners, who will speak to you in detail about why it shouldn't be one-way. It would be advantageous to update the Placer County web where people type in Speedboat Beach to have the next steps, when the ordinance is approved, have that information on the web. Also, could there be temporary signs put up if this isn't going to be done this summer? It's a summer/fall, summer's your biggest issue there. I'm not sure what the cost is for temporary versus the permanence of signs, because I don't know how long it's going to take to get those up, and I think that, I think that's all for right now. I'll let the homeowners speak for themselves.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Nat Goldhaber, and I'm the chairman and co-founder of the Brockway Point Homeowners Association. I'd like to begin by really a heartfelt thanks to the staff, particularly to Peter Kratz, Stephanie Holloway, Andy Fisher, and Mark Rideout for their very hard work with us on trying to put together a coherent plan going forward. Also, I'd like to thank the three supervisors, as well as David Bosch, who took the time yesterday to come out and walk the streets with us, as well as with the staff, to really try and have a firsthand understanding, particularly Chairman Weigandt and Supervisors Holmes and Euler. Thank you very much. So, the Brockway Point Homeowners Association is a group of friends and neighbors who love our community, and we love it because of its unusual nature. Most of the homes were built in the 1920s, when the first vacationers began to come to Tahoe. About half of the folks who are there today have homes that are of that age. About a third of the people are full-time residents, two-thirds are there on a part-time basis. Let me emphasize, however, that those of us who are second homeowners are not the exclusive people who are there. There are plenty of folks who are there, who live there full-time, whose families have been there for 90 years, and whose principal asset in life are those homes. Just a two-second anecdote, on the Fourth of July, at Gail High's house and Kristy Spencer's house, for the last 90 years consecutively, we have had a neighborhood Fourth of July party. When my wife and I first moved to Brockway about 30 years ago, the pathway down to Speedboat Beach was a narrow, tree-lined pathway. You had to make your way between the branches and get down there. It was a beach that was used predominantly by local residents and with the gleeful acceptance and happiness of the homeowners in the area. In the drought in the 90s, something began to change. Among other things, the Cal-Neva began to direct its guests down to that beach, and in addition to that, the drought itself made the beach much, much larger. We became alarmed, and the Brockway Homeowners, Brockway Point Homeowners Association was formed in part to respond to that. Our very first action was putting garbage cans down there because the litter was becoming well out of hand, and every morning, many of us would go walk the roads and collect litter at the side of the roads. The North Tahoe PUD picked up the garbage. Now, we're in the second drought, and in addition to the second drought, as we've heard from staff, the internet has made an enormous difference. We are now getting people from all over the world, and we are really in a very crowded condition. Let me say that also, as the $10 fee at Kings Beach for parking occurred, we saw another large bump in utilization of our streets as parking as an alternative to paying the 10 bucks. Let me tell you what we are totally and gleefully in agreement with that staff has proposed. We are, we are happy to accept the parking restrictions on that map, although I guess we're still finalizing the details of that map, but we had a very good meeting of the minds collectively with some of you all and the staff yesterday on which specific areas were the worst pinch points, so we're very happy with that. We are happy with the idea of a loading zone that's formalized. We are very happy to continue with two-way traffic. We are, we are happy to see that there is a plan, at least, to put in some more sanitary facilities down there, and we're happy with interpretive signage, although in some instances it might be a little clearer if you said, actually, no dogs, as opposed to showing a picture of a dead chipmunk. We extend to the county and to our neighborhood an offer from the Brockway Point Homeowners Association, which is that we will be happy to participate in putting up signage at Highway 28 and Harbor and Speedboat, when in fact, there are no parking places left down there, which is usually at about 8:45 in the morning during the summer, and say, loading and unloading only, there's no parking down here. We might, I did talk to the woman who's the head of the Visitors Association, and asked her whether or not she could make a small amount of money available from their resources in order to hire a student on a part-time basis to actually partially take care of that, but we'll do it on our own if necessary. What I'd like to ask the board to do for the remainder of this year is to take a look at some specific issues and direct the staff to take a look at these issues together with us. One thing I'd like to ask of the board specifically is that you consider expanding the enforcement that is a pilot program from 30 days or 25 days to 60 days. That will cost an extra $10,000 approximately, and I think it's well worth it. I don't think we need a pilot to prove that enforcement is going to be useful. It will be useful. The pilot would be how useful will it be in actually controlling things, and we'll be able to determine that next year. We want to therefore request very careful measurement together with us and the staff over the next year. We ask that you direct the staff to do this in certain areas. We ask that we investigate the area, as was suggested, of expanded permit parking for some of our older residents. We want to direct the staff to work with us on very careful monitoring of the number of citations that are given, the number of people who go to the beach, the number of cars that are parked, and the number of cars that appear to be circulating that area looking for parking. I think we can probably, by doing it on a few days collectively, we can come up with some much better statistics than the statistics that we have today. We'd like to investigate the notion of paid parking, a kiosk that delivers a ticket that you put on your dashboard, like most major cities have. you put on your dashboard, like most major cities have. Or conversely, we could do it with an online mechanism, but then the argument is that people who don't have access to the internet would not be enabled. So I could see that that might be more difficult, maybe a combination of the two. Or even selling parking permits, day parking permits, through the kiosk that already exists in Kings Beach. Finally, we'd like to ask that this ordinance that is being imposed, hopefully today, later on, and all of this study be regarded as basically a test program for the period of one year, and that we reconvene against next year. I'm told that sunset is the wrong word, because it means you go back to the way that it was before. But I would like to ask that not one single issue that we decide today is cast in stone, and everyone is open again to reexamination next year to see just how well it's working. Finally, I think that there is an elephant in the room which no one has mentioned, and that is, on the busiest day last year, we estimate that there were more than 500 people on the beach. This year, assuming that the lake doesn't come up much further, we're likely to have more than 500 on the beach, because the word of the beach is continuing to expand via the internet and word-to-word mouth. Word-to-mouth? People talking to each other. Mouth not working. I think that at some point, it is absolutely incumbent on us, the neighborhood, the staff, and the Board of Supervisors to think about the environmental impact of too many people on the beach. And like many of the national parks and probably county parks, I don't know this for sure, they do limit the number of people who can go there, and one could have a sign saying, "Beach full." And I really think that we need to study that issue, understand the environmental ramifications of that many people on such a narrow portion of land, and finally, if necessary, take action, which I hope might happen. So again, let's hopefully reexamine this next year. Hopefully, the very excellent work that was done by staff will in fact improve things, enforcement will improve things. But let's not leave anything in stone. Let us reexamine next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Usually you clap after I've said something.
Not me.
Mary Beth Abdo. I'm from the Brockway neighborhood. The people of Old Brockway, let's start it out like this. If there is a tree that falls in a forest and there's nobody around to hear it, does it make any sound? That's an age-old question. If there are rules posted on boards, if there are laws posted on signs, and there's no one there to enforce them, do people follow them? The answer in Brockway is no. These rules and laws have been broken all day, every day, all year. We even saw it yesterday, for those of you who came to visit. There's no parking on county roads until May 1st, and you saw cars parked from the base of the beach all the way up to the highway. Parking and circulation has been talked about, but that is our key, number-one problem. You saw cars parked in unusual spots, you saw people smoking down on the beach, you saw people on the beach with dogs. More people had dogs than didn't have dogs, and most of them were unleashed. We need consistent enforcement. We need it definitely during our summer times. You can craft the most wonderful rules, the most thoughtful laws, the most well-intended rules, but if there is no one there to enforce them, history has shown, especially in our neighborhood, that people will do whatever they want to do. How do we know that enforcement will work? Because we've already done a program of that two years ago. Two years ago, private funds were put forward in the neighborhood. We hired off-duty deputy sheriffs for six hours a day, five days a week. Our beach, and they were only in charge of the beach at that time, returned to a family-friendly beach. It was a total turnaround. We did this for under $16,000 for an entire summer. So it's our hope that while the private funds were never meant to be in perpetuity, that you will find the funds to create some enforcement that's consistent in our neighborhood. Thank you all for listening to us. Thank you for even bringing new ideas to this meeting today. We appreciate it, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Steve Clayton. I live on Speedboat, and we've had a house there for 21 years. I too would like to compliment the county staff on the considerable amount of work that they've put into this problem and the effort and care they've taken in engaging with the community to come up with a solution. My concerns today are primarily around public safety, and there are certain enhancements I think are needed to what is being proposed. First and foremost is potential for fire. The swale on the east side of Speedboat is quite deep, as some of you would have seen, and there is no current barrier stopping people from going into it. When parking is moved to the west side of the street, the flow of traffic is gonna go down that side, and I'm concerned of a door opening, for example, on a parked car, or children being released out of the car, and a car having to swerve and go into that swale. Last year, we had a situation where somebody was trying to park in that swale and ended up with the front end of the car in the air. That car had to be towed out. My concern is around rupturing a fuel tank and sparks being igniting and a catastrophic fire as a result. The other concern around fire is people parking off-shoulder against some brush or some scrub, and a hot catalytic converter could potentially start a fire as well. So all these things, I think, need to be considered in greater detail and barriers put up where there is high risk. The second point I have is around the pinch points. Pinch points and restricted parking at the moment seem to be around allowing the flow of traffic to continue in the narrow roads. But they should also take into consideration line of sight, because cars coming down and cars going up where there's only room for one car at speed, and if you don't see them, could cause a crash, and that crash could then cause real problems on circulation and/or again, the potential for fire. My final point is around speed. I think the speed restriction at the moment is 25 miles an hour, and I think in the summer, during the absolutely peak seasons where you can hardly move, 25 miles an hour is just too much. And considerations should be given to restricting speeding to 15 miles an hour in our neighborhood. Thank you very much for your attention, and I hope some enhancements are seen to the otherwise excellent plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rich McGuffin, and I represent the owners of 9950 Lake Street. That is the property that is lakefront that runs from the pier to the Nevada state line. First of all, I'd like to join the others that have thanked the county staff for their tremendous work on this project. We have enjoyed meetings and cooperation from county staff, as well as the sheriff's office, over the last several months, as we try to work on what is a tremendously important project for our clients. I will reserve my comments on the parking ordinance until they present that matter in full. But as far as the rules and enforcement, this is a particularly important subject for our client. First of all, and this is being a little nitpicky, but in the packet that was presented to the board on page 13, it discusses the ordinances that apply to the separate sections of either the public trust area or Speedboat Beach. In the section of ordinances that apply to Speedboat Beach, it lists Placer County Code 9.08.010B, and it states, "No alcohol consumption." I just want to clarify that it is not just consumption, but possession as well. And not only is it no alcohol consumption or possession under Article 9, but Article 12 of the Placer County Code also prohibits consumption and possession of alcohol on Speedboat Beach. In that connection, as is made clear by this packet, while those ordinances don't directly apply to the public trust area, which is my client's property, subject to the public trust, it is important to understand that the vast majority, nearly everybody who accesses that property, who accesses that portion of the beach, does so through Speedboat Beach. So if somebody is found on the public trust area with a dog, or in possession or consuming alcohol, they have already violated county code. And that is something that we would like to see more strictly enforced. And as I said, I know that we have had conversations with the sheriff's office, and there have been some concerns related to the feasibility of enforcing that particular complexity within the code. People who have violated the code on Speedboat Beach found later on the public trust area, but it's pretty simple. They either arrived there in a boat, or they didn't. So if they have a boat, then they're probably not in violation of the code. If they don't have a boat, they're in pretty clear violation of the code. And this is, as I said, this is a very important issue to my client, not just the enforcement of the ordinances on the beach, but also the parking ordinances. And together with another lakefront owner, we have come up with $50,000 that we are going to donate to the county, and we'll work with county councilors on how to do that, to support enforcement, whether it be parking enforcement and as well as the enforcement of the ordinances on the beach. Ms. Abdo just talked about how several years ago, they needed $16,000 to make the beach a better area. We fully support Ms. Abdo, as she is a neighbor, and our other neighbors and the other owners in the HOA in having a family-friendly, enjoyable beach. And thank you very much for all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Good morning. Edith Tobin, Brockway.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. One of my colleagues has a comment or a question.
Real quick. One of the prior speakers had mentioned that the Cal-Neva was directing people down to the beach. Has anybody reached out to them at all and talked to them about the issue?
Supervisor, we've tried to make contact with Cal-Neva about, really more about seeing if some of their existing private parking might be available for day users. Haven't had any conversations with them about how they communicate with their folks or patrons of their facility to go down to the beach. As you probably know, I mean, the county is closed right now. It's in the middle of doing a project. So I don't know historically, you can't validate that that's the case, that they indicated for their clients to go down there. But I want to continue, or our staff wants to continue dialogue with Cal-Neva, again, off-site parking options.
Yeah, that was my next suggestion, is, you know, if they have a parking lot, so there's a way to utilize it. Thank you.
Yep.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My concern with the Speedboat enhancement is fire. Originally, the easement was sold to the county for fire, so that the fire department would have access to pump the lake water out in the case of a catastrophic fire. And I'm concerned that the fire department be brought into all these changes in circulation and enhancements, so they still can use the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Could you state your name for the record?
I beg your pardon. Edith Tobin.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dan Yori, 96th Speedboat in Brockway. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff and the board for everything that they've done to this point. I'm here to speak about the historical history of Brockway. As most of you know, Brockway Hot Springs was founded and started in the 1870s, and the Brockway community was a spur of that, where my grandparents purchased the home in 1921. And for all the years that I had been a resident of Brockway, which is the last 45, and being a youngster living up here in the 50s and 60s, Brockway was always known as a very historical residential area, and the lake, like Nat said, was a little trail that ran down. You couldn't hardly see the lake. And the flow of the traffic and the people that are in our neighborhood now has completely disrupted the historical nature of our neighborhood. We don't want to keep the people out from enjoying the beach, but we want to have the respect of our neighborhood. As you know, most of the homes, like Nat said, are built in the 20s and 30s. Mine was 1921. And it just doesn't have that same feeling. So whatever we can do to preserve the natural beauty of our neighborhood is greatly appreciated, and we thank you for all your efforts to this point.
Thank you.
Good morning, honorable members of the board, esteemed council and staff. My name is Greg Lean. I've been an attorney in Tahoe City for the last 35-plus years and formerly a resident of the Brockway neighborhood. And I represent the owner of the lakefront at the Nevada end of the beach. And I won't repeat a lot of the comments that have been made so far. I really appreciate it, Nat Goldhoffer's thoughtful contributions, and also Rich McGuffin's. Rich and I have been talking about really trying to amp up the enforcement, what we can do to help the program out, and putting up some money for the process. So my clients are very, very committed to making this a better place for visitors and residents alike. And to the staff, I want to say I love it when a plan starts to come together, and it's somewhat rare when the public participation process runs as smoothly as it did this time. You really listened, you really took down things, you used cutting-edge tools to get at opinion. Kudos all around for your really professional work. I really appreciate it. As to specific points, first on signage, I want to echo the comments made that we really need to get together with a consistent signage plan, and perhaps even consistency county-wide. I thought that was a good point, too, but consistency, and we'll look forward to working with you. One of the points I wanted to echo of Nat's, too, was let's make this a continuing process. It sounds like you want to do that, and we want to work with you on an ongoing basis, too, to really make this a very, very successful plan. I wanted to comment, too, that with regard to the enforcement, we really need to coordinate carefully, both with the CHP and with the sheriff's office and with county staff going forward. And in particular, we do need that period of intensive enforcement to really get the word out that the sheriff is back. We've got a sheriff in town, and they're dealing with it. We've got CHP that are dealing with the parking and helping us out. The word does get out, and I'll tell you, in that neighborhood, people, you know, know people, and word-of-mouth is the way a lot of things spread. And unfortunately, the way the signals got spread so far, I think, has been the word-of-mouth is, hey, it's open season. If you want to go do whatever you feel like doing, Speedboat Beach has been the place they go, with dogs, with alcohol, with drugs, with this, with that. And that needs to come to an end. And it sounds like we're on the right track with your help to do that. So thank you again.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers that would like to, please come forward, state your name, that would like to address Part 8? Okay, we'll take those two remaining, and then we'll get on. The key is, we got to get to the parking component, get that detail worked out, too.
I'm addressing both parts. I won't be back again.
Okay, great.
I'm Paul Nelson, 147th Speedboat. We've lived there for 29 years now, May 1st, and we raised our kids on Speedboat Beach. It's a place we love. It's one of the most unique, wonderful neighborhoods I've ever seen, certainly one of the best at Tahoe, as an old world of beauty that happens to have an incredibly beautiful beach. And we all recognize how beautiful it is. We all want to share it with everybody, if we can have reasonable limits. And the whole problem is, how do you balance the needs of the public to be able to get to the beach, and the needs of the residents to be able to live and to be able to access their homes? And I want to thank staff and the members of the board who came yesterday to see exactly what's going on. And I totally support the proposal that's going to be put before you. I have a couple of additional comments. One, if your car is towed, this is called an Uber moment. And I could see a wonderful summer job for someone. And I could see a wonderful summer job for someone in college, being available to drive people to Truckee to get their cars. The one problem that hasn't been addressed, that I think is important, is that when people go to the beach in the summer, and there are a lot of cars, and a lot of traffic, and they go down, and they've seen no place to park, and so they drop their family, or their friends with the beer, or whatever, at the entry point. And then they say, I'll be back in a minute when I park, and then they drive up, and there's no place to park. And so you have the situation where they need to find a place to park. And they circulate, or they park in odd places, and the photos that are available to you are ones that I took last summer, just showing some of the creative ways that people park, across corners, at intersections, backing up into the brush. We have a vacant lot next to our house, where people are parking inward, perpendicular, backing in to an area of brush. And if that ever started a fire, it would be a horrible fire. So I totally support the parking efforts, and restrictions, and enforcement, and I think it's going to be a better situation. I'm glad it's going to stay open to further discussion. And we genuinely appreciate your consideration and your efforts to deal with what's become a really awful situation in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Courier, and I'm one of the builders that, 40 years ago, we rebuilt 237 Harbor, and then 235 Harbor Avenue. The first two, as you turn downhill on Harbor Avenue. I wanted to thank the members that toured the area yesterday, but I don't know if you toured from White Cap up to North Lake Boulevard, because I noticed on the parking area, that parking on the right side of the far side of the road, there's very limited area there, and Clara Eckhart has a three-unit complex there. And to park on that grade would be somewhat disastrous, because as we look, with the infinite wisdom of TRPA, when we built 235 Harbor, they forced us to build within 16 feet. We wanted to build 30 feet back, but they built from the road edge to my window, it's 16 feet. And for those who have seen the traffic there, that's a lot. When traffic's going down, or coming up the road, two vehicles end up sometimes, literally, on my property, so they can pass beside each other, especially if there's a UPS truck or something of that nature. Don't mind it, except when there's a vehicle parked there in front of my residence. One of the things I was happy to see, that there's a, you're looking at a proposal to have a loading and unloading zone down near the beach, because I think that's essential for people to bring their, you know, summer gear down there, which doesn't exist now. However, I was concerned immediately with that parking area on both sides of Harbor, and the area from White Cap up to the roadway, to the stop. As an example, 235, or 135 feet down from there, during the wintertime, the cars slide literally backwards all the way down that road, and hit the telephone pole by my place and the tree across from it. But that's wintertime, and the summertime is not 28 days. They're going to the beach now, as you've experienced. The homeowners association mentioned 60, that would be a minimum. However, I wanted to share with you, I need to catch up on some of the issues here, but running buses in there? I would invite you to stand in my front yard, which is 16 feet to the roadway, and watch a bus go by? Do I want a bus going by there? Would you want one going by in your neighborhood on a regular basis? I don't think so. It's very difficult. I wish I could have parked, or built further back, but we were unable to at that time, because the TRP wouldn't allow it, and I could not get the Placer County planning to work with me on that one. So I wanted to share those concerns, I will be in contact with most of you more, now that I'm engaged and realize what the situation is here. I thank you for the time.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just respond, sir? Sir? If I could just respond, we're not proposing buses down there. In fact, the recommendation was that we prohibit buses and vans over a certain length, so just to be clear, we're not proposing buses.
I thank you for that, Jennifer.
You're very welcome.
The other thing is, just to mention, along as I returned, is that we're in Lake Tahoe, and other places in California, we do have areas where people are only allowed to bicycle into the area, or walk into the area. We know this beach is being used extensively right now, in the impact, but at least a loading and unloading zone, I think, would be very helpful for those who do want to, you know, go to, use that beach, and still not create a serious traffic problem. Thank you.
Good morning, Humbert Sandman, president of the Brockway Homeowners Association. My address is 70 Speedboat. I want to applaud the staff and the board supervisors for these proposals for the emergency ordinance, and realizing that the emergency ordinance for traffic requires a fourth, fifth vote, I encourage you to vote in that fashion. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate all the good work that's been done so far.
Okay.
Good morning, I'm Jan Briscoe, I represent the Tahoe Lakefront Owners Association, and I'll just take a few minutes of your time, and listening to this, and being engaged in this process, has been very enlightening for me. I think we're going to have this issue on many other county beaches in the very near future. I think this is just the tip of the iceberg. We have a lot of neighborhood, community beaches, that was the intent, I think, of these in the beginning, and they're just going to be more and more pressured with respect to parking, impacts to the beaches, the soil, and those kinds of things in the basin. What is missing for me here is the master plan. I don't see it. When we started this process last spring, we were promised a master plan, that's how they went out for funding. $50,000 was earmarked for this, it came from a number of sources, and we went to the scoping meeting. Again, master plan was the word we were using at that time. It was going to identify impacts, the uses, the patterns of use, that kind of thing. Last summer, not one study or evaluation, or for even one day, was made of either the traffic or the beach use, to see how people were actually functioning down there. I think this is what's missing, because Tahoe Regional Planning Agency has gone to great lengths in this regional plan update, to make sure that we cover these issues at the local level. And I think that's one of our mandates, and to show that we're capable of it, and that we want to do a good job when the time comes to do that kind of thing. I think the parking is very important, the homeowners you've heard from, but I also think that we have missed a very important environmental review of the impacts to the beaches. We have a sensitive plant, endangered plant in California called the Tahoe Yellow Crest. We wanted to have some, we have some safe zones down there, people have planted it to try to reintroduce it to some of the sandy beach areas. Again, we've done no evaluation of that at all. I'm just looking for something that brings the master plan back to this discussion, and maybe this is the first step for this, and then we go off, and we start to do a little more evaluation. Something I heard one of the speakers say about the Calneva, Boulder Bay is also doing a huge project, that's the only real public access for the entire area. There isn't really anything, you know, of course, Washoe County, that's all private, and Nevada, and California, they'd either go to Kings Beach, or to the Speedboat Beach is the first place to make it walkable. So I think this is something we'll be revisiting, and I thank you so much for your time today.
Okay, this will be the last speaker regarding the first item, keep in, we're going to have a public hearing regarding the parking, but we need to, we have a busy agenda, and we need to sink our teeth into decisions on the public parking, so.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board, my name's Don Starbitt, Brockway resident and property owner. I'd like to commend the staff and the board for their action here. I think the plan is workable, I think the key is enforcement, and I encourage the board to vote in favor of this amendment.
Thank you.
Ann Nichols, Pier Avenue, real quick, just want to say, capacity is really important, I'm so glad Jan brought this up about the analysis. In the meantime, we could do the recommendations for permit, or for fines, and for the restricted parking, but we really need to figure out the capacity of that beach. And I'd love the county to consider those sites that you guys took back, from BBLLC down in Kings Beach. We need more parking down in Kings Beach, which could be, like, for instance, that parcel you have for sale on Chipmunk and 28 right now, that could be a little parking lot, and that's, would be the closest one to this beach. Could be a satellite area for people to use, so please look at that stuff. You have all that land, and it doesn't seem to be flying off the shelves as far as taking bids and selling it. Thank you.
Okay, Peter, is there a presentation on the parking lots specifically, in addition to what we've heard already? Yes, it appears there is.
I'm sorry. I have.
Oh, wait. Okay, so Nat.
Yeah, so yeah, we would just move to Part B, if that's okay with you, Chairman, and we have a handout, because this came following the staff report that was published back on first part of April. So what I'll do, if that would be okay, I'll move back to the proposed parking restrictions that were, and ticket increase that we're proposing as Part B. I'll formally read that item, but just for the moment, I want to make sure you understand what we're talking about here, for refining existing parking restrictions in the Brockway neighborhood. So in the original staff report that you have before you today, it's different than what you see here, let's go back to that quickly. What you see in your original staff report for Part B is, let me get this going here, is on the right, you can see the red lines really indicate where we're saying you cannot park on one side of the street or the other, and these include the various streets in the Brockway neighborhood, including Speedboat, Harbor, White Cap, and Dip. What you see there as proposed is, again, some refinements of what already exists there today, that you see on the left-hand slide. You know, based on further analysis after we published our initial report, and talking to the neighborhood, and looking at widths of the road, and blind spots more closely, we want to offer up this alternative, and I'll just highlight some of the changes from the original report, the report before you. The circled areas are really what's changing. We originally proposed having some restrictions up on Upper Speedboat. We think that section of Speedboat is wide enough that doesn't require restriction, and the houses on the left side of that have limited parking opportunities, so we don't see issues there of implementing a restriction up there. As you go further down Speedboat, sorry, I don't have a pointer that works, but if you go further down Speedboat, just below Dip, you see a circled section of Speedboat, where it is 17 feet wide, probably, in that section below Dip, and so we're saying, having restrictions on both sides of Speedboat, in a section there below Dip. And then, everything else is the same, in terms of proposed restrictions. Some of the speakers talked about, we're moving parking restrictions on the east side of Lower Speedboat, because of that large AC swale, so that's one of the refinements. And then the other changes, as you see here, that are circled on Harbor, really just in that blind spot area that people speak of, making sure in certain sections, it's parking restrictions are on both sides of the road. And we had originally proposed changing some of the restrictions on Lower Harbor, from one side to the other. We're really looking at, the lower section of Harbor is the widest part of any road out there, and people park on the west side of Harbor, and that works very well, we believe, so we don't want to change that restriction. And that's where we actually will put the loading/unloading zone on the lower side of Harbor, on its west side. A lot of the details of all this will be worked out, you know, as we produce signs, and do our striping, and work with our sign shop, and those, and all that, but the ordinance language and the map before you today can go forward, if you kind of understand what we're talking about here, and I'll get to the formal part of opening up the public hearing on that. One more thing here, we're adding, proposing a restriction on White Cap Lane on the north side that you see there, and then flopping the restriction up on Upper Harbor, from west, or from east to west, for erosion control issues as well. So overall, we think, you know, full, a lot of engagement with the neighborhood, a lot of engineering analysis of the road widths out there, we think this is a good refinement of what exists today. And so if I could be so bold, what we're asking you as Part B today, Chairman, and members of the board, is conduct a public hearing, and adopt an urgency ordinance to take effect immediately, modifying parking restrictions on a portion of Speedboat Avenue, Harbor Avenue, Lake Street, and White Cap Lane, modifying enforcement responsibilities, and establishing increased penalties in specified areas. One-way restrictions are not being recommended by staff as part of this process.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, so just for the public, and then for all of us on the board, going to open up the public hearing for comments specific to the parking ordinance proposal, but I want to make sure and make it clear that the board will have an opportunity to make any general comments as to questions that were raised, like having an annual review, or anything else that board members might like to speak to, but I want the comments during the public hearing, if we can, we've heard a lot already, if you could make them targeted specifically to the parking ordinance proposal. So with that, I will open up the public hearing for that purpose. See none? Just kidding. Got you, though, for a moment, huh?
Sorry, I'm trying to look at the new map. My name's Rich McGuffin, again, I represent the owners of 9950 Lake Street. I will try to be as efficient as possible. We support the vast majority of the county's proposed parking restrictions. In fact, we are very happy about the implementation of this plan. There are a few comments that we would have. First, from an environmental point of view, we think that it is very important to accomplish a couple of things. One, to ensure that there is no off-pavement parking. What we want to accomplish here is to make sure that that off-pavement area in the neighborhood is not further eroded, so that that sediment isn't going into the lake. Secondly, we want to see these designated parking areas striped, so that, and we can do this any number of ways, but so that enforcement and overcrowding are more easily controlled. We feel that striping the allowed parking areas will assist both the sheriff's office, and will also assist with population control on the beach. We are very much in support of the continued existence of two-way use of the roads. Let's see, trying to go through my notes here, I apologize. If I could ask a question of county staff, real quick, on the west side of Harbor, between Wave and White Cap, are we now showing that that will, will the existing restrictions will continue?
It's okay, Chairman, correct. In that section, yeah, where you see the dashed yellow on the east side of Harbor, and then on the west side, there's definitely sections in there where it's restricted on both sides because of the pinch point and the blind curve area. Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Other than that, what we would like to see, we feel that Wave Avenue is a bit problematic. It is a dead end, it is fairly narrow, and parking on Wave Avenue leads to ingress and egress problems. Other than that, we're very supportive of the fine, very supportive of the loading and unloading zone, and the only other recommendation that we would have is, we would support permitted parking at some point in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Nat Goldhoffer, again, from the Brockway Point Homeowners Association. We like it a lot, we're 100% in favor of it, presuming that we do reexamine after a year. And I would like to make an appeal that I'm 99% sure represents everyone, except the clients of the attorney who just spoke. We don't like lots of lines on the street, we like minimal signage, we want to keep it a pristine neighborhood, and not make it look like downtown San Francisco. Thanks.
Hello, Greg Stock from 200 Harbor, and thank you for hearing us with our neighborhood problems. In particular, I'm looking at the map between White Cap and the highway, and we have a dotted line on the east side of Harbor, going towards the highway. And on this side of the road, if there's going to be parking, the cars are going to be parking in the street. There's a fire hydrant, a very large tree that the street actually goes around, there's heavy forestation, there's fences, as well as driveways. heavy forestation, there's fences as well as driveways. There virtually is no room to park on that side of the street. And up near the upper portion, it's not safe for cars to park on either side of the street. This is a very steep, narrow intersection. We have trouble with it year-round. When I wrote my letters to you folks, I brought this out, and it looks like, it looks like nobody walked the area. Please take another look at this area. I'm not going to speak for the other portions. There are a lot of valid comments have been made, but go walk this area again. There's some real issues here. This is not a safe area for parking, especially if they're parking in the street. Where will the cars go? Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Is there anyone else?
I'm back up just in what Greg was just talking on the parking, Richard Courier, 235 Harbor. What he just described was well-done in terms of that area. If one look at it, and there's no reason to have parking on the east side up there. There just isn't the room for it, and for the speed of the traffic also in that area. One would think going down that road that they're driving fast. Actually, they drive 35 miles an hour, sometimes plus, going up to the limit sign. By the way, CHP and the Sheriff's Department give us good coverage, but they can't be there all the time. And that narrow area, it's tighter than it appears to be. I was surprised to see that those dots were on the right-hand side. Even though I don't live on that side of the road, I could say ignore it, but you can't ignore it because it encroaches, it's so tight in that area between the trees and the telephone poles. The additional thing on a personal basis, and I like to, as you're quite sure you're homeowners and that, is that in parking there, if we draw our blinds, you would think that people wouldn't drive them, but they'd drive into your driveway in that area and park. And they said, "Well, there was nobody here, so we parked in your driveway." It isn't just on the roadway. So, that if there isn't any parking in there, it would help solve that problem. And I've talked to some of the people, and yes, there are some that park there that make the friends and clients we have visiting afraid to ask people to move their cars. It does happen. Most people are pretty cooperative, though. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Dan Yori, I also own two properties on Yacht Street, and I'd like to ask the staff of what are their thoughts on parking and no parking restrictions on Yacht Street? As in the summertime, not only are the cars, once it's full, then they migrate both sides of Yacht Street. So, I'd like to hear your comments on how you're going to deal with Yacht Street, which is narrower than Speedboat and Harbor.
Good.
Jim, would you like me to respond?
Thank you, Peter, yes.
I'll back up to the comment on Harbor, just to clarify there, that we did look at Upper Harbor and all the roads in terms of how we're fashioning our proposed parking restrictions here. Today, we prohibit parking on Upper Harbor on the west side, where the folks speak about driveways being encroached on, and that's a dirt shoulder on the west side of Harbor. The east side of Harbor, where we'd like to allow parking to occur, is curb and gutter. And yes, it is out in the roadway where cars would park, just like many other areas of the Brockway roadway network. We want to encourage cars to be on the pavement, and we recognize that is a narrow section of road. Its average width is about 19 feet, but we allow parking to occur in other sections of roadway in Brockway as narrow as 18 feet in certain areas. It is a balance. Again, the point there is to discourage parking off pavement that occurs on the west side of Harbor at the top and flop it over to the curb and gutter side. With respect to Yacht and Wave, for that matter, two very narrow roads, as we know, our staff's opinion is not to highlight those narrow roads by putting more parking restrictions. We recognize that on big days, you know, people will speak to say that people will go on Yacht Street and try to park there. If you walk those roads, it's one driveway after the other, and we'd like to leave those streets alone with adding, by not adding more signage and more restrictions, the fact that if you're blocking a driveway, you can be cited by law enforcement, and it doesn't require more parking restrictions to be placed. So, again, a balancing point, we don't propose putting anything on Yacht or Wave.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? See none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for consideration of the ordinance. Jim?
I do have a question, Peter, as to, there's, on Harbor, there's just above Wave, coming down below Wave on the west side is no parking, then there's a small section that would allow parking, and then at the corner, another area that, that's a really weird noise, I don't know if that's me, hope not, another area that would prohibit parking. Is there some reason that we allow or are proposing to allow parking within that narrow area there?
Supervisor Montgomery, it's a wide section of Harbor there where we are, we do want to allow it. And it's in between the two blind curbs, so we think it's a safe place for allowing cars to park. Today, if I get this right, we're allowing parking even on that lower, if you look at the lower curve on Harbor, cars park there. We want to disallow that into the future, but still allow a section where there aren't curves for parking to occur.
Yeah, and I know that it's a fairly wide section of the road. You know, for those who don't know, I live in the area, I live on Donner Summit, my husband's a North Tahoe firefighter, I've been down these roads dozens and dozens of times. My concern is not so much the width of the road as the stopping and starting of parking and no parking, which tends to confuse people, just in my experience. You know, you have no parking between here and here, but suddenly you've got, you know, three spaces worth of parking, and then you don't. And just thinking maybe about making it a little bit more consistent.
Agreed. Okay.
On the issue with fire and emergency access, I have had some conversations with the fire department recently, just last week. They are pretty happy with what they're seeing here. They have had problems in the past accessing Speedboat Beach, but they're pretty happy with what they see in terms of our proposal. They're also quite happy that we're not proposing one-way streets. And just wanted to let you know that I did reach out to them just last Friday to touch bases on this.
Great. Any other questions or comments by the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
So, I would make a motion that we adopt the parking restrictions, but under discussion, if I could, I would like to encourage staff to take into consideration for future consideration some of the things that came up today, no buses, vans, making sure that we do come back and revisit this within a year to see, is it working as intended or were there unintended consequences? Really, truly, also would encourage us in those areas that are going to be designated as no parking, that we actually figure out some way to prohibit people from doing that so you don't get the people backing in rather than parallel parking. So, maybe a lot of nice boulders to go along the roads to prohibit people from doing that. And really, thinking very strongly, again, for my seventh and a half year in a row, that additional code compliance and parking compliance officers in the area, not just for Speedboat Beach, but for these same problems which we find throughout eastern Placer County.
So, is that a motion then to adopt the ordinance as per the recent explicitly?
And just for the record, the board will be substituting the Exhibit A on the document passed out this morning for the Exhibit A in the staff report in the agenda.
Good. Is there a second?
No.
Second by Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any closing comments by any board members?
I'll start with a couple. I strongly support the notion of coming back in a year and having a real thorough discussion and data collection along the way. And then, obviously, you folks did a great job working with the communities. That's greatly appreciated by me and the rest of the board, I'm sure. So, just expect and hope that would continue and come back with any and all information that'll help us. I'm sure we won't get it perfectly right the first time, but I'm sure we're taking a great step forward.
I see no other comments. With that, we will move to our 10:15 timed item, which is an update on the North Lake Tahoe Economic Incentive Program and a request to provide direction to staff regarding guidelines, applications, and the scoring. Is that a, is that? I guess so. Jennifer, are you going to kick this off?
If I can get the mic to work, yeah. Did I do that? Chairman Wygant, members of the board, Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive Office at Lake Tahoe. We are back today discussing a program we have reviewed with you a few times as it's moved forward in its genesis from really some ideas about the fact that the Tahoe Basin was not moving forward as quickly in economic development as the rest of Placer County, to some real empirical analysis that demonstrated that we do have some challenges to a further business plan that outlined the opportunities for Placer County to implement some specific programs. What you have before you today is the program itself, including guidelines and procedures. So, we'd like to walk you through that and also get some feedback from you as we move forward. I'm going to turn it over to Chris Perry, who was the management analyst in our Tahoe office, and he will be assisted somewhat today also by Paul Griffith. The three of us have worked on this together for quite some time, so look forward to presenting it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Again, Chris Perry, Placer County Executive Office, Tahoe. I'll go into a little more depth than Jennifer just outlined. This program is a product of two prior reports. Placer County staff presented your board with the consulting firm Economic and Planning Systems, or EPS for short. Work on the first EPS report commenced in late 2014 and culminated with your board's acceptance of a February 2015 report on economic development incentives for North Lake Tahoe Town Centers. Working out the recommendations of the February 2015 EPS report, staff commenced the design of the Economic Development Incentive Program and Implementation Plan in conjunction with EPS, and presented this second report to your board in October of 2015. The program before you today contains the formal program guidelines, application, and scoring system that embodies the implementation plan that we presented to your board in October of 2015. Before we take a deep dive into the program components, it would be good to highlight some of the key findings in the first two reports. First, let me put some of the challenges to development in context. When a developer seeks to invest in the Tahoe Basin, they encounter multiple barriers to entry. These include extraordinarily high development costs, uncertain timeframes for project approval, a confusing permitting system, and a complex commodity system. When the state of California eliminated redevelopment agencies in 2011, it significantly impacted Placer County's ability to incentivize private investment in environmental and economic development projects in North Lake Tahoe. Without dedicated public revenue streams to offset extraordinary costs characteristic of desired environmentally sustainable development, the county's had to act more creatively using existing resources and financing opportunities in order to maintain a proactive role in identifying and facilitating achievement of economic and environmental targets. The challenges don't stop there, though. According to EPS research, structured parking costs in the basin range between $30,000 and $70,000 per spot compared to $25,000 outside the basin. This puts in-basin projects at a competitive disadvantage to those outside the basin and affects the scale of projects proposed by developers inside the basin. Additionally, the fragmented and confusing entitlement process, sometimes taking upward to five to eight years, drastically undercuts the internal rate of return on projects, making them less feasible. The net result of lack of investment in the basin, particularly in lodging, is a growing gap between TOT revenue inside and outside the basin. This graphic illustrates the gap through 2013, 14. Fiscal years 14 and 15 continue to show the disparity within basin TOT revenue, tracking nearly $1.4 million below Squaw Valley and North Star. If we were to add in Alpine Meadows, Donner Summit, Wilderness Valley, the gap would be even wider. To close the gap, additional lodging units must be built, and the overall product's got to improve. This context shaped the first EPS report in February 2015. On February 24th, your board acted to accept a final report on economic development incentives for North Lake Tahoe Town Centers. The report contained five standalone analyses, including a review of existing demographic and community conditions, analysis of existing regulatory process and development constraints, development prototype feasibility analysis, potential incentive funding sources, and detailed analysis on possible financial incentive tools. The report also made the following key findings and recommendations, which were presented to your board for direction. One, hiring an expert staff member to manage large projects and work on streamlining the permitting process. And two, put together a business plan to guide the development of a tourist accommodation unit and infrastructure cost offset program. Staff went immediately to work with EPS to draft an incentive program and implementation plan. The February 2015 report painted a sobering picture of the challenges developers face while investing in the basin. No new tourist accommodations have been built in the basin for over four decades. Staff drafted the October 2015 report in order to achieve multiple concurrent goals. One, to develop the catalyst projects in the Tahoe City and Kings Beach Town Centers. Two, incentivize removal of blight. Three, continue to attract visitors to the basin by developing a desirable lodging commercial product. In order to achieve these goals, one crucial piece is to provide developers a program that contains cost offsets to help encourage investments in North Lake Tahoe Town Centers. On October 20th, 2015, your board acted to accept a final report on the North Lake Tahoe Town Center's Economic Development Incentive Program and Implementation Plan. Sorry for the time full. The report set forth program priorities, guidelines, criteria, financing options, return on investment analyses, and recommendations on implementation and administration. The proposed program contained two main components recommended for immediate implementation, the tourist accommodation unit, or TAU, cost offset, and the infrastructure cost offset. These two offsets formed foundation for the program before your board this morning. The TAU cost offset will fund and acquire commodities required to develop overnight visitor accommodations, as well as establish a program to bank acquired TAUs and issue them to projects that meet established criteria. Infrastructure cost offset focus is primarily on parking, but with flexibility to incorporate other costs on a case-by-case basis. Funding for this offset could include, but is not limited to, certificates of participation, revenue bonds, general obligation bonds, net proceeds from sales of successor agency properties, future tax increment that would have otherwise accrued to form a redevelopment agency, transient occupancy tax, and other general fund revenues. Appropriate sources will be considered in consultation with the treasurer tax collector, and will be reviewed by your board in advance as applicable. The infrastructure cost offset component also includes a development fee deferral element that allows eligible developers to defer payments until certificate of occupancy, again, with application and approval based on specific project needs. This fee deferral element is consistent with existing deferral provisions in county code. Staff have worked to streamline this process. We move forward to April 2016. What's happening today, what are we presenting to you? This is the formal guidelines, applications, and scoring system. We've worked to streamline this process as much as possible in order to ensure that we're not creating an additional burden to the developer, thereby creating a disincentive to invest in our communities. The timeline for the program is fairly simple. An applicant expresses interest in participating in one or both of the cost offset programs, either the TAU or the infrastructure piece, prior to or concurrent with the pre-development meeting. So, our goal is to have this occur pretty early in the process when a developer walks through a door. The applicant presents their project to staff, and staff provides any initial feedback applicable to their project and the program itself. The applicant will then formally submit an application, which is Exhibit A in your packets, and submit it to the county project review committee. This committee consists of five individuals, one from county executive office, economic development, SEEDRA, public works facilities, and the treasurer tax collector. The committee will score the application based on the scoring system in Exhibit B in your packet. If approved by the committee, the project then is presented to your board for consideration and/or your approval and/or denial. All final documents are complying with the Brown Act and Public Records Act, of course. So, who can apply? I mean, because of the need for catalyst projects in town centers, lodging or mixed-use projects with a minimum of 40 accommodation units for the TAU component of the project are a key program target. The threshold was established based on feedback from the stakeholder group Placer convened to provide program input, and is based on a number of units believed necessary to catalyze future additional economic development beyond the proposed project, another key program goal. Participants included, from the stakeholder group, included representatives from affected county departments, external agency leads, the business community, land development experts, commercial property owners, and current and potential land development experts, commercial property owners, and current and potential investors. While the program is targeted at redevelopment, develop projects that catalyze further environmental and economic improvements, there may be opportunities for smaller projects that might not meet the program's score thresholds that I'll describe to you a little bit later, but would benefit from the program, both inside and outside the town center boundaries. Therefore, the program reserve up to 25% of the TAU program assets for smaller projects, defined as those requiring fewer than 40 TAUs. The recommendation to reserve assets for smaller projects was also suggested by the Stakeholder Group in order to provide needed upgrades to existing blighted or financially struggling smaller lodging properties. These smaller projects will be analyzed and evaluated based on the same criteria as larger projects, but will be qualified based on achievement of a proportional share of the criteria. The application itself contains four sections, and they are laid out in the following way. One is alignment with the area plan, a total of 30 points of 170. Economic impacts, which is a total of 60 points. Developer information, total of 60 points. And finally, environmental improvements, which is a total of 20 points. Total possible points, again, is 170. The application will be reviewed for criteria related to consistency with desired area plan outcomes, attainment of environmental thresholds, the scale of economic impacts, including job creation, public revenue growth, scale of public infrastructure improvements, and applicant experience in financial capacity. Specifically, the Project Review Committee will examine and assess each application to determine short and long-term economic impacts that will earn revenue back to the county in order to reimburse incentive outlays. Staff recommends a threshold of 120 points for approval into the program, but will allow for project approval on a case-by-case basis based on the full discretion of your board. As you can see from the scoring matrix example, staff have identified specific objectives to be achieved and will award points accordingly based on that achievement. The full scoring breakdown can be found in Exhibit B of the program document. The scoring system represents informed feedback and data collected from the EPS documents and Placer Departments and Agencies. Staff place great emphasis on the economic and developer sections of the application as this is where your board will be able to ascertain whether an applicant has the means to successfully complete a project and contribute positively to the benefit of all Placer Tahoe communities. Additionally, staff tested the scoring system to ensure that desired catalyst projects can actually achieve the recommended minimum threshold score of 120 out of 170. In the two hypothetical examples on your board, both projects would score well and would be recommended for approval to your board. The first example was based upon the Kings Beach Center Concept Project, which is one of the concepts as part of the area plan update. The second example is purely hypothetical, but staff wanted to demonstrate the achievement of a smaller project as they went through the program. At this point, as mentioned at the start of the presentation, staff are looking for feedback from your board on the program guidelines, the application, the scoring, and obviously, we'd appreciate any further guidance you have on the program. It's our intention to make any suggested changes and adjust the document to bring it back to your board for final approval in fairly short order. So, thank you for your time, and we welcome any questions you may have or any feedback.
Questions, comments from the board?
Kirk. Was there any concern generated by the fact that both of the sample products, or projects, barely cleared the minimum threshold? You had a minimum threshold that you said was 120 for consideration, and neither of these scored very high above that out of the 170 possible?
I don't, I don't know if concern would be the word, because I think they both qualified. And as I mentioned earlier, it is a case-by-case basis. The recommended threshold is 120, right? And if you look at what we're scoring, we put a high premium on the economic impact of the project and who the developer is. They'll score high just in those areas. But if, if you have any intention of aligning with the area plan, which almost all would in some of these areas anyways, or making any environmental improvements, you're gonna score above the threshold. But again, we leave it on a case-by-case basis, just to be fair, so that maybe there was something in the scoring system that didn't relate to the project, but the project's gonna bring, you know, additional benefits that maybe we weren't measuring for. So, we wanna leave that possibility open.
Thank you.
Jack.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the insight on this. I have a question similar, or I think sort of along the same thought process of Kirk, which is when we look at these examples of project scoring, one of the things that we had discussed in an earlier meeting was the fact that I was not supportive of allowing any points for general plan compliance, because to me, that's just a given. If, if, if it's a requirement to the general plan, you shouldn't get any points for it. How would these have scored under that scenario? Or perhaps I'm asking, how long is a length of string?
It's a great question, and when we scored these, it was very subjective. And without a specific project, it's a little bit hard to answer that, but we tried to take in that question that you had. Without a specific project in sight, knowledge, it's really hard to say for sure, but we did try to take that into consideration.
Yeah, so I would just reiterate my concern with pulling the area plan into it as a basis for points. To me, the area plan is just a baseline. It's a given. The community vision, I think, is a little bit more nebulous and offers more opportunity to say, because the, the community vision isn't, isn't a bunch of rules. It's, it's a, an idea of what it should look like, what it should feel like, what the gestalt should be. So, I think there's some points that you can add in there. But I, I think if we've got specific rules and regulations under the area plans that we expect developers to meet, they shouldn't get a point for that. And maybe that means making it less than 170 points. I'm not saying let's penalize them, but let's not give them points for things that are just absolute expectations on our part.
So, just to clarify, the, the intention of the community plan points was not to say, well, you're doing what you're required to do? Because, yeah, we agree that's nonsensical. It was really going above and beyond, taking into consideration, what is the community vision? And you're not just meeting required standards, but you're moving toward achievement of that vision, whether it's you're putting in water faucets that would not otherwise be required, or additional landscaping, or community gathering spaces, or other design elements that were not...
Thank you. Did I have it on before, and I just turned it off? I didn't know if it was my head, because my head is so plugged up that I couldn't hear myself talking. So, so we're, let me start over again, so everybody can hear me. The, the intention was not to just provide points to people who met required goals and standards and ordinances. The intention was to provide points to people who were going above and beyond in achieving and striving for the goals of the vision for Tahoe City or for Kings Beach. So, I, I think we can do a better job in our next iteration before we bring this back to the board for approval and making that point very clear. We're not giving you credit for something you're required to do. We're giving folks credit for things that we want to incentivize them to do.
That's great, because I think it's really just semantics. Alignment, to me, is not going above and beyond. And I think we, when the language comes back in the future, it should talk about, you know, exceeding these expectations rather than just meeting them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Who's gonna be making these decisions? Is this purely staff, or is this gonna be a combination of staff with, with members of the community making, doing the scoring on, on this? How, how does that work?
The scoring will be done through the County Project Review Committee, which has been established, and it consists of one person from five different agencies. One is County Executive, SEEDRA, Economic Development, Public Works Facilities, and the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office. That's, that's the committee as we've designed it. And that committee is the one we're making the recommendation either way. I mean, if it was a recommendation to your board to approve, that's who'd be making the recommendation. We didn't necessarily form a full community, you know, stakeholder group to score them for, for this particular effort.
Well, I, I would suggest that if you don't have a, a member of the community on there, that you make sure that your justifications are fully, you know, vetted, because I, I've got a sheet here, but it doesn't really say. It just has numbers. It doesn't really say why something fits in to something, so. And that's gonna be especially important when you talk about this superior 30 points for vision. What does that mean? So, you need to be really detailed on what, how that vision, how that project is consistent with the vision, so.
So, so I'm almost wondering if we created more trouble than it was worth by putting in that sample slide to demonstrate that, that people could achieve the goal. But I think, and, and comments heard very loud and clear. So, when we, we are actually scoring a project that has plans and things that are very clear, we will be looking in that, and you'll get, your board will get a very clear description of the specific reasons why we're making recommendations in certain areas, so that the community has an opportunity to participate in a public hearing before your board deliberates. And when you make that decision, it's based on community feedback as well as county staff. We left county staff only on the, the recommended group of committee members, because some of the information that we will be reviewing is financial information. Some of it may be confidential, where we're gonna be using third-party resources to review the, the documents for. So, we felt it was important where we needed, needed to shield some of that information on behalf of, of a developer to do so. But I mean, certainly, the, the scoring and the reasons behind that will be public and will be shared with the public, because we do think it's important, because it's really their vision. It's not county staff's vision, so that, that we are ensuring that we're maintaining consistency with that.
Right, no, and, and I'm not, I'm not jamming you up for the visual. I like the visual, actually, but as it develops, that's, we need more meat on the bone, you know? And I would just look at it as a staff report coming to the board supervisors as to why this project meets the criteria. This is great for today, but moving forward, we just need a little bit more.
Thanks, and I, I do wanna comment on the committee. The committee is a recommendation at this point, and we have had conversations with the departments, and we, it may end up looking a little bit different when it comes back to your board, depending on interest and ability to participate. So, that could change up a little bit, and if it does, we'll highlight that in the staff report when we return.
And I'll just map on to the prior two comments by both colleagues in that, on, on the consistency with the community plan or any of our other regulatory standards, I guess, one thing that Jennifer's comments, comments need to think is that I wouldn't, whereas we certainly would want that going in, there is a process for amendments to community plans, and I wouldn't think that we should predispose that somebody who has a great idea that wasn't anticipated through this community plan process is a bad idea. So, I don't think, we may end up thinking it's a bad idea, but, and oftentimes, that does happen. I don't dispute that, but, but I think we wanna be open to that. So, the notion of, I guess, that compliance being a neutral starting point, I think is important for, for a reason I didn't think of before Jennifer made her comment. And then, what I'm seeing is the market mechanisms, I guess, to, this includes the fact that you have an applicant who wants to be successful with a grant, who therefore is gonna be filling out an application, trying to convince staff and then us that they're in a good position. So, so there's gonna be that dynamic where they're trying to really sell us on all of the components, because some of it will be subjective, like the economic benefits, et cetera. But it'll encourage them to put in things like water fountains or other community amenities that wouldn't be required as per the minimum regulatory process. So, I think as we, yeah, like Jack, I think the example was a good thing, keeping in mind that at the end of the day, I suspect we're gonna have some pretty tough questions as to, even on specific elements, why something scored the way it did, and we're gonna wanna need and expect staff noting that there will be proprietary information and confidential information, but you'll have to be prepared to, to express that to the fullest extent possible. And at the end of the day, we're gonna have to bite the bullet and make decisions. But other than that, I, I'm really excited about the opportunity and, and the, the kind of entrepreneurialism that could be reflected in all of this, noting the difficulty and the track record that's been reflected in that difficulty of trying to get things done in the basin. And only, other than that, a question I have is, has there been any more thought or specificity as it relates to, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to create this market, if you will, for the TAUs? And we talked before about the rate of return, and I ended up, at least personally, with this position that, you know, if we at least created a, a standard where our charges should be at inflation, so that we preserved the bank, if you will. Has staff had any more, developed any more thought behind all of that, or?
We have had a lot of, I guess, additional confidants, except there were...
Several, there are several levers within this lovely return on investment sheet, and we would appreciate direction if you have levers you would like us to look at, as in TOT. Right now, it's 10%. It could be, for a new project, a higher number, which would greatly enhance the returns.
Good. I'd love to give me a copy of that sheet, so I can see it.
And this was in our last packet when we, we were here in October. So, this is the same thing, and, and it, just to be clear, I mean, that, because, in part, because nobody can see this, including myself, this demonstrates that for a, a project of a certain size, and I think this one was either 80 or 120 units, that there is a rate of return to the county of 2% over a 10-year period, given usage of that number and the county's investment in those TAUs. If we put those TAUs on the street, we will get a rate of return of more than 2% over that period of time. Paul's gonna add something.
Let me just clarify, if I can get to my phone. This actually is a return on investment analysis of purchasing 200 TAUs, the banking of them, and then the cash flow over 15 years. So, it's only using half of the TOT revenues. Half of them go to the general fund, half of them are for this. So, just to clarify that, it was not for a specific project, but for the actual banking of 200 TAUs.
So, thank you. I got confused, because I couldn't see it, and I was relying on my memory. Bad idea. So, that said, however, I think it's important to note that we're not suggesting that the TOT collected gets set aside to pay. We're suggesting that there is a revenue source that is gonna be spun off of this, that the county could choose to set aside on a case-by-case basis when we bring forward a project. Or you could, could choose to say, well, that's, you know, above and beyond what we were getting off of that piece of property. We'll continue to invest it in other ways, whether it's bike trails or other capital improvements, or, or, you know, whatever we wanna do with that. Or we could choose to set it aside, or charge a higher rate on that site and have the property owner agree to do that. So, there are a lot of different ways this can be sliced when we bring it back to you. This was simply to demonstrate, we're not gonna lose money. But, but I think that the actual assumptions and the methodology on the, the return are gonna be different on a case-by-case basis, and we, we will hash those through as we discuss those with you.
Hence, the inclusion of the treasurer tax collector.
Potentially, yes.
One more quick add to that. This is a, what we believe is a very conservative analysis the EPS did, and it does not include indirect impacts. So, the ripple impact of these catalyst projects is to get more folks to stay in these town centers overnight, go to the restaurants and shop, and do the other things that they would do in the cities. So, this analysis does not include any of that. And you, I think you'll find on most return on investment analysis through developers that they will come forward with those kind of numbers. We did not try to go there.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anyone from the public wanna address this item? See, none. Did you get enough feedback from us as per your request? Is there...
I, I'd, I'd like to get a, I'd like to get a look at the data packet that you used to put the performer together, so if you can throw the assumptions in.
Certainly.
Just for my own curiosity. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to our 10:45 timed item, which is Public Works and Tahoe Truckee Area Regional Transit System Plan Update and the Request to Adopt a Resolution Approving the 2016 Plan. Ken.
Good morning, Chairboard members. My name is Ken Grant with the Department of Public Works and Facilities, and we're asking now to consider and adopt a 2016 Tahoe Truckee Area...
There we go. Regional Transit System Plan Update. Periodically, we go through planning for the future of our transit system, trying to find out where we wanna go. A large portion of that is centered around us trying to get grants to provide those services going into the future, but overall, just what do we wanna see through our transit system? Last time we updated the, the TARP plan was in 2005. Since that time, we've had a host of... of accomplishments, I believe Gordon will talk about those in just a minute, but beginning in 2012, stakeholders throughout the region, including Trucky as well as North Lake Tahoe, kind of came together to talk about their vision for transit in the, in the North Lake Tahoe area, what we're calling the Triangle, and they, they came up with ideas and, and a plan, and, well, a vision for what they wanted to see with a, with a mantra around frequent, fun, hopefully free, and of course, always safe. This update that we're asking you to approve today really takes that into account, is really trying to bring that vision into our planning efforts, and so Gordon Shaw with L S, L S C Consultants did prepare that update, and he's going to take a few minutes to walk you through some of the basic elements of that, of our proposed plan.
Thank you, Ken, once again Gordon Shaw with L S C.
Got it, once again Gordon Shaw with L S C, and you've, you've done a good overview of why we're trying to do what we're doing right now, there's really three things that have kind of come together, there's been the fact that it has been 10 years since we have last done a detailed plan for TART, and we've really checked off a lot of the things that we're on, we're running out of to-dos on our, on our list. We have the vision plan that has been a, a very collaborative effort with lots of people at, at TRPA, at the Resort Association, at the T M A, the Town of Trucky has been involved, the major employers have been involved, and I see this plan as, as kind of taking that as a framework and saying, okay, now, we, Placer County, what are we going to do about it in the short term? So to come up with those steps to say, all right, it's an implementation plan rather than more of a broader vision. And the third thing is that we, we, you may be aware that there are some major developments that are proposed in this portion of the county, and we wanted to get a framework for what those negotiations might be for participation by major developers, and so this kind of sets that framework. I don't really need to go through the various elements there that you can read. Quick slide here on the elements that we looked at, we, we tried to delve into the things that are typically done in a, in a short-range plan, looking at demographics and demand factors, a review of the existing services, what is not working, what is not, we did do an onboard rider survey in the winter, and so we've got some information about that, of what the, what the actual riders think, lots of gory details about service scenarios that I will not bore you with, and looking at different options and so on, but what we've really focused in is this development of a financially constrained as well as a financially unconstrained plan, I'll get into the definition of that a little bit more in, in a bit, but the bottom line being, we can't afford to do in the short term everything that we'd like to do, so we've made kind of a razor cut of what can we financially, foreseeably, look at doing in these five years, and then what is, what we'd like to do beyond that, the unconstrained part. Quick summary here of demographics, if you probably know, between 2000 and 2010, there was a pretty substantial drop in population, particularly in the Tahoe Basin portion of Placer County, of 23%, the latest census numbers are that we've started to come back a bit, 5% increase, so there's, there's more people potentially riding the bus. TART does go into Trucky on both 267 and the, and the 89 routes, and so it's important to look at that as part of our area, and that's where the biggest growth in population has been, and we can see our demands shifting. We, as transit planners, like to look at various categories of people that are more potentially likely to ride the bus, youth, 8%, 9%, elderly, 18%, and, and so on, persons with disability, 6%, I think kind of a takeaway here is it's, it's easy to think, well, this is snow country, we don't have elderly over 65, we don't have people with disabilities, and when you really look at it, we really do, and they're actually a growing part of our community, like a lot of other resort areas, and we've got 10% that are below the, the poverty line that also tend to use the bus. A quick overview here on just what, what is TART right now, and where the whole thing stands, the map there, the three routes, the three colors are kind of the three key routes, the main line, the kind of along the lake shore that goes from just inside Eldorado County to all the, to the Hyatt in Incline Village, there is a funding agreement with Washoe County, they pay for their part, that runs year-round during the day, hourly service, most of that route is half hourly in Incline, just because of the way the buses kind of work out, as well as in the summer, it's half hourly from Tahoe City over to, to North State Line. We have the 89 route, which is shown in kind of a gold color there, which is from Tahoe City and our fancy transit center there, up to the Trucky Train Depot, it comes into Squaw Valley, comes to this facility, it comes to the village, that's once an hour also. We've got 267 service shown in red, which now, as of actually this, this year, we are now running that year-round, which is exciting improvement, that, that covers North State Line to, or Crystal Bay to Trucky hourly. That is the daytime service, but there's also a night service, which TART buses are now doing, it was a contracted service for a few years, but now it's a, a, a internal TART, Placer County employees doing that, and that is from Squaw and North Star in towards the lake, and it's hourly service, it goes almost, some routes go as late as 2 o'clock in the morning, and it's surprising how many people are out there riding it at 2 o'clock in the morning. And there's also a skier shuttle, a service that's peak days and weeks during the, the ski season, that's a couple of buses, so it's a relatively small part of the overall program, but it's a, trying to get a little bit higher quality of service for, for visitors. We also have, as you're, I'm sure, aware, the Americans with Disabilities Act says that we need to provide service for people who live close to the routes that can't get to the bus stops. In this part of the county, it's not done with kind of a typical dial-a-ride van, it's done with a subsidized taxi program, and there's, it's, that has functioned reasonably well over the years, and one of the challenges with that is that the taxi service does not have a wheelchair-accessible van, and so when somebody who needs a wheelchair, and there are many people that have disabilities that, that do not use a wheelchair, but when we have someone that does need a wheelchair shows up and needs a ride, that's, that's a TART dispatcher who's got to kind of leave the radio and go, go do that ride, and that's been a bit of a challenge. Quick summary here on numbers, lots of numbers, almost a third of a million passengers per year, which is actually down from about, about six years ago, five, six years ago, that's mostly because of changes in seasonal workers, and where they live, and where they work, and so on, it's been relatively stable in the last few years. There's 17 buses in the fleet, it's a, it's a pretty substantial fleet, 10 are in operation at peak times, particularly in the winter, just under $5 million a year in annual operating costs, lots of different funding sources that make that happen. I'll have another slide about recent improvements, but one of the key things that has come out of this vision plan is the rebranding of it, you've probably seen those buses that are, that have got real good public response to them, of, you know, hey, those buses are looking very, very attractive to people, and that is part of branding this whole region, including the Town of Trucky program, as well as the services that go up to the Honor Summit, as one service, so particularly a visitor will see it as one service. In terms of service quality, one of the things that we look at is, well, are we overloading our runs, and we do have some runs only in the winter, in the morning coming westbound across the North Shore, and then particularly going to Squaw and going to North Star, and then in the, in the afternoon coming back, so it's particularly triggered by some skiers, but mostly employees that are going towards the, the major ski resorts. I mentioned a survey, which gave us, gave us way too many numbers to, to talk about, but just a couple of highlights, just under half of the TART riders in the winter are permanent residents, about 40% are seasonal residents, and about 11% are visitors, so we do have visitors using the service, we'd like to have more. Most of them live in Placer County, even though we do go serve Washoe and Trucky, about half are traveling for work, about a third, just under a third, for recreation and social purposes, and then kind of the rest are relatively low numbers. We did some kind of one-to-five scoring on that, asking people's perceptions of the service, I'm happy to say that 70, one being very poor, five being excellent, happy to say that 71% indicated their overall experience on TART was a four or a five, so it was good or an excellent score, people are happy with the service overall, they really like the drivers, so good job whoever is hiring the drivers and vetting them. The worst scores were for service frequency, as I mentioned, most of them are just, most of the services are just once an hour, and then the hours of service, so we had 20% and 18% that gave that a poor or very poor, and then on-time performance can be a challenge, particularly in the winter. So what, what the, our existing customers are asking for in particular is evening service in the spring and the fall, because after 5:30 or 6:00, you're, that's it, we're done in the spring and the fall, and then more frequent service. As I mentioned, there's a long list of re, of recent accomplishments, I won't read through them all individually, but the key things here is that 10 years ago, we had a good service along the lake, and what we've been doing in the, since then, is putting together that same level of service on the two other sides of the triangle to get into Trucky, so we've kind of incrementalized our way into that, but now we have hourly, year-round service on both of those routes during the daytime, and we've got partial winter service. If Will Garner was here, he would probably, and he's got a, a very good excuse not to be here, but-
Excuse me, we have, we have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the data here, and, you know, I like, I like seeing the numbers of the passengers, but I guess what I'm missing is ridership on the, the bus is full, I mean, it's great that people like the driver, but if there's five people on the bus, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So did we do any sampling to find out, you know, whether or not the buses were full, whether, you know, what, what the overall, you know, because 322,000 passengers over a year may sound great, but compared to what? You know, how many people are using cars in, in the basin? You know, those, those kinds of numbers, I think, would be real, real interesting to know, because before, I want to expand a, a, a bus line or add more services, I want to know what's being used now, so.
There are a lot of numbers in here on by season, by route, the ridership, by hour of day, those sort of things, I will be quick to, you know, to summarize, the North Shore in particular, from Tahoe City over to, to Kings Beach and North State Line, that's our, that's our star, that's very strong ridership, and you could go out there today in kind of the off-season, in the middle of the day, and yes, there will be eight or 10 people that ride that bus in an hour. Some of the, as I mentioned, we have overcrowding problems during the winter in particular, in particular going to and from the ski areas, as a resident of the West Shore, I'm sorry to say that the West Shore from Tahoe City down, lower ridership, you know, and now we're talking even in the peak times, maybe five or seven passengers an hour, so it's very much highs and lows over the course of the year and so on. In terms of, they kind of got to the mode split question of what proportion of the total people coming to a resort or something are, are on transit, it's relatively low, I must say, it's, you know, it's a 3% to 5% kind of number, where other resort areas might have a 15% to 20% numbers, and some of that is chicken and the egg of, you know, once an hour doesn't attract a whole lot of people who've got a car, those sort of things, so there's, there's a, a lot of background there, but we could go into a lot more detail, but yes, we have, we have our strengths, we have our weaknesses, we're trying to focus on, on the strengths areas here. Oh, let, let me just a little bit more before I, I hop to kind of the key graphic there, we took all this information, and there is a lot more in the report, we talked to staff, we talked through with some, some of our vision coalition partners, looked at a lot of different alternatives, and really tried to focus in on what makes sense for the, for the dollars that are available here, and came up with this next graphic here, which unfortunately isn't unreadable from a long distance away, it is in your packet, but a couple of things to, to kind of pick out here, you can obviously, hopefully everyone here who is not, doesn't have a vision disability can see the difference at least between the blue and the green, and the blue is the financially constrained planned elements, those that we think we have a reasonably foreseeable funding source to fund those over the next five years, and then the green are the ones that are, are financially unconstrained, we'd like to do it, but we can't quite see how we, how the funds get generated for those. I'll get back to what reasonably foreseeable new funding sources are in a minute, but just to kind of walk through this, the, the key elements here in the blue is to add, to get the 30-minute service on the North Shore, both in the winter as well as in the off-season during the day, so that all year-round, we would have a bus every half-hour from Tahoe City all the way over into Incline. We would be adding 30 minutes service from North Star into North State Line, Crystal Bay, we would be adding 30 minutes service from Squaw Valley into Tahoe City in the winter, in the daytime service, no 30-minute service in the, in the evening, but, which is when it's less, less productive, but we would have 30, essentially 30-minute service in the, in the winter on, and the summer throughout that whole blue network that you see there. We would add off-season evening service on all these blue services, up till about 8:30 or 9 o'clock, that's where when we look at ridership in a resort area on bus systems in other areas, that's kind of where the cutoff is, so we're not going nearly as late, but it allows restaurant workers to start to get home after restaurants start to close up, those sort of things, allows the, the people to get out in the evening and, and get back home again, so that's part of this constrained plan. We have some capital improvements, we'd like to do some improvements, even though it's just outside of Placer County at the top of the hill in Crystal Bay, that's where it makes sense to have a better hub for that end of the system. We want to better coordinate the daytime and the evening service, right now, there's in some places, the last bus, daytime bus leaves at 5, and then the first nighttime bus is until 7, because we have, we were doing it as two services, so put it together and we'll, we'll improve that, the overall thing. We'd like to expand the summer service, right now, it's, the, the summer season is only July and August essentially, it's, it's like the 25th of June to Labor Day, we're seeing more ridership, more visitor activity earlier and later than that, so we'd like to expand that a little bit. We would like to negotiate with the Town of Trucky's contractor to provide a wheelchair-accessible van, to provide these wheelchair trips in our part of the, the world here, there is some, some ideas about expanding mechanics and capacity that way, so that, that's what gets us to the, to the blue boxes. The green box is what we'd like to do later with more funds, up in the upper part there, that reads as add 30-minute peak service, which is during the day, and that would be year-round, and then add evening service, which is, right now, there's, there is no evening service north of Squaw and North Star, but to, but to get evening service into Trucky. The other kind of key element is lower right, where it says eliminate all passenger fares, make it a free bus service, which we can do as long as we find another source to, to, to fill that back in. Most of the other ski resort towns, or mountain resort towns, have a free service, if you go to Park City, if you go to Mammoth Lakes, they've got a very successful free Mammoth Lakes transit service, it's kind of what the visitors are expecting, it also is quite a good bang for the buck of, of taking off fares and getting something like a 45 or 50% increase in ridership, without really having to run more buses, so that's where we are on the overall plan. Some numbers here, we would be adding about 67% to the overall hours and cost of the service, we'd be adding three more buses at peak, a lot of these new services would be outside the peak, like evening, we would be adding ridership to the tune of about 32% with the financially constrained plan, so it's about a 1.8, 1.9 million dollar nut. In terms of implementation, it would take several years, both in terms of the mechanics of it, as well as funding sources, the first steps likely would to be half hourly daytime service on the North Shore, and some of those runs would go to Squaw Valley to get direct service into Squaw Valley without having to transfer, and we'd like to start that next winter, as well as off-season evening service starting next fall. You'll probably hear from, from the Resort Association here, which is, which will say that this is kind of their plans, their, their thinking right now, at least at a staff level, to, to, to use T O T funds for that. So this kind of, one of the key questions here is what's a reasonably foreseeable new funding source, the top one here is actually more closer to be, to being money in the bank, the Federal Transit Administration has a 5307 urban funding pot that is available to metropolitan planning organizations, there's a long story here about how the Tahoe region was not fully eligible for those funds through the, the, the hard work of the TMPL, the Tahoe Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the TTD- the TTD staff and so on, they've made the, the change in the rules so that essentially we can shift about six-hundred-thousand dollars more per year of operating dollars into the transit program. You're, I'm sure aware that there's a proposal through PCTPA for a new county-wide transportation sales tax, you, some, some reasonable numbers here of dollars that could be available, and this, the idea here is about forty-five percent of the total funds that are collected this side of the hill gets us to the seven-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-dollar area. A third one here is expanded transit operations of community or county service area zone of benefit, fancy, lots of jargon in this field, but this is building upon what actually you were, you, the Board of Supervisors did as part of the Martis Valley Community Plan back twelve, fifteen years ago, of setting up this zone of benefit so that, that properties that have developed since that point in time in, in Martis are now paying into about, they're paying about fifty thousand dollars a year into TART. The idea here is that we would expand that zone of benefit to cover other areas. And then where this ties back into the, the land development process is, there's some numbers in here that start to give a framework for what, what the other funds that we need to implement the vision, a, there's lots of different mechanisms for how you would then allocate that, but one based upon traffic volumes on Highway eighty-nine and two-sixty-seven would indicate about a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars per year. So you can see that, and we could have a philosophical discussion about whether we're being too optimistic or not, we are assuming that these all come true in, when you see those service improvements, and that's financially constrained. And then we get to financially unconstrained beyond that part, I've kind of gone over this, so I don't think we need to, to hit this anymore. But, but these, this idea of eliminating transit fares, getting to the real service enhancements up to Truckee, that is over and above these dollars, we could get some good, great ridership numbers out of it, but it would take another one-point-four million dollars a year to, to implement all that. So, key takeaways, our plan will enhance transit services, particularly through increased frequency and expanding night service, those are the two big things that the riders particularly said they wanted to see, that is also what we see when we talk to other resort areas about how they get to a more visitor-friendly transit program. Our ridership would increase by about a third. Very bluntly, our implementation is dependent on new reasonably foreseeable funding sources, if those don't happen, then there's more decision-making process about what do we, what, what makes the cut and what doesn't. And it doesn't fully implement the transit vision plan, we knew that going into it, it's going to take more funds, it's probably going to take more funding partners to get to that point, but we'll have taken a big step that way. And with that-
And maybe I'll just, for an additional sixty, ninety seconds, I think Gordon talked a little bit about how this may play with some of the future economic development that we're striving to have here in the North Lake Tahoe area, a responsible economic development. I do want you to know, we've heard in a bunch of venues about how a lot of the proposed development, things we're proposing are going to increase vehicle miles traveled within this area, and in addition to that, increase traffic congestion, particularly at some of the peak times of the, of the year. Since expanding the roadways, which is one option to, to solve some of those issues, really, first off, won't improve vehicle miles traveled, if anything, it's going to lead to additional vehicle miles traveled. But in, in general, in our, in our area up here, it's found really not to be a desirable thing to go expanding the roadway. And so I think what we're finding is that more and more people are looking at transit services as a way of mitigating some of those impacts that are already going on, as well as may increase going into the future. And so along with the, the plan for this study is really a, a method and a, a way to show people how they can participate to help mitigate some of their impacts, so we're hoping it's an additional tool that some of the, the future developments will have in meeting their needs to ensure that they do not have a negative impact on our roadway network. So I want to make sure folks know about that, each one of those will be evaluated individually, but this definitely gives us a framework to do that evaluation on a case-by-case basis. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, comments by the board? Jennifer?
Thank you, great presentation, as always. I did have a couple of questions. So in the most recent year that we have dated, we had three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand riders, roughly, do we know how many we had back in two thousand and five, when we put this plan together?
When we put the last plan together?
When we put the last plan together, yeah.
I don't believe I have numbers in here that go back that far, but certainly can provide that to you.
We do have them, just not here.
Okay, yeah, it, it just seems to me that it, I love this list of everything we, we said we were going to do and we've done since two thousand and five, it'd be useful for me to understand how ridership has increased over that time as well. This is truly just for my own benefit, is there any reason that we don't go into Alpine Meadows and Grand Le Baccan? I see that we go into Squaw and we go into North Star with transit, but is there a reason that we don't go into those other admittedly smaller resort areas?
Going up to the top of North Star, or top of Alpine would take a whole other route.
Okay.
We already have struggles with people who just want to get from Truckee to Tahoe City, and it takes about twenty minutes to loop in and out of Squaw Valley, and we've, we've struggled with different ways of doing that, but the way we're doing it right now is kind of serving the most people with the, the buses available. So there has been times when we've gone into the bottom of Alpine Meadows to kind of Deer Park, but we don't see much ridership at all there, because it is just so much of a seasonal sort of thing. So that, the bottom line there is that that has never generated enough. Grand Le Baccan is, is a challenge, it's really the only major resort property in Tahoe that doesn't, that we're not serving directly. Again, it's, it's, it falls into that category of, if we were to do it, because of the way that the whole North Shore mainline route runs, it would put us over to, to make the time to go in there and back out again. So it's always been, and, yes, sometimes you would get ridership, and sometimes you wouldn't, you'd be taking, everybody who's, just wants to get home to home, but in and out of that, that area, so, you know, there may be some other strategies of providing a van or some subsidy to that resort to, so that they can provide better access just from there to the transit center. But with big buses, it doesn't work.
Understood.
Particularly, some of our big buses would take, would, we would take off the tanks off the top if we went in there.
Probably not good. And I know in the case of Alpine, Squaw, Alpine actually has its own internal shuttle system.
Yes.
Have we looked at coordinating our schedule, I'm not sure they have a schedule, or if it just runs all day long at, at Squaw and Alpine, but have we looked at coordinating our bus schedule with Squaw and Alpine so that we can drop somebody off potentially at the entrance to Alpine, and then have them just pick up the internal Squaw-Alpine shuttle?
Maybe I'll just mention, a lot of our system, particularly along eighty-nine and twenty-eight, really goes on a few hubs where we need to have all these buses meet together. So it can be very difficult to adjust the route away from those hubs without impacting our major hubs, which happen to be like Tahoe City and over on the other side, over by Incline Village. We have worked with them, make sure they know what we're doing, try to have it on their end, meeting us up, and I think there's been some success, some limited success with doing that, but very difficult for us to change our route times based on our hubs and making sure we make all our connections.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're having that conversation with the resorts to see how they can help us help the larger transit community. Just a suggestion in terms of mechanics and capacity, I know Truckee has its own shop, we have our own shop, and I, I would suggest that we have some conversations with CalFire and the other local fire districts to see if there's, you know, some sort of regional mechanic facility where we could actually combine efforts to achieve some cost savings. When we look at the financially constrained plan and what that will do, I note that it will increase costs by one-point-eight-five-seven million dollars a year, one-million-eight-hundred-fifty-seven-thousand dollars per year. The envisioned foreseeably new funding sources is one-point-four-nine-five, so we do have a shortfall there. But my question is actually, does that one-point-eight million include the vision of free in buses?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Free, free would cost us, actually in two different ways, we would lose somewhere along the lines of seven-hundred-thousand dollars a year in fares by that point, it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg, we do all these service improvements, we get more ridership, and then we've got more fare revenue to lose when we go free. We would also have to add some buses in the winter, because we would get this big increase in ridership, and we would need to, to run a few more runs on particularly the North Shore to Squaw and the North Star. So I think the overall was about one-point-one million out of going for free. Don't quote me, don't write that one down, it may be nine-hundred thousand total, but, but no, the, that list of reasonably foreseeable doesn't give us enough dollars to go free. I will say that we are also assuming some growth, just based upon trends, in the existing sources. We're not assuming the existing sources go away, and by the way, employers who are paying into, you know, free trans, providing their free transit to their get, to their employees, which is quite a lot of our ridership, those dollars are assumed to be continuing here as we go into this. But overall, yes, we still have, we, we have balanced out our revenues and our costs for the financially constrained.
Okay, and, and I'm not critiquing the idea of free at all, I just wanted to understand what those dollars meant. I think there is absolutely an expectation, particularly for visitors who come here, who have been to other ski resorts, whether, or, or winter recreation resorts, whether it's in Europe or here in the United States, that there's going to be free transit, and we've got to figure out a way to get there, because it does incentivize people to use our system and get off the road.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this? Please come forward and state your name.
Good afternoon, Sammy Evans Hall, and I'm at Tahoe Resort Association, and as Gordon mentioned, he thought we'd be coming up here and talking to people, but this is so, so exciting, I can't, I'm just very, very thrilled that this is happening. This is something that we've been working on for the last four years.
Excuse me, sorry, send it.
And, you know, and it's been a vision, and we've been looking at how do we fund this vision, and what kinds of things might we do? So I am, I'm really excited to see it now being brought to you for adoption. Couple of things I'd like to mention is that, as Jennifer, you mentioned, it's really important that we do get to the free service. I think in order to truly get to the ridership that we all want to see, which should only be about thirty-five to fifty percent greater than what we have right now, we really need to have a free system. We are contemplating this year in our proposed budget that we're working on right now to bring back to you, to do, to increase the frequency during the wintertime to thirty minutes, and to offer the off-season evening service. So those are both being contemplated right now within the TOT budget that we'll be actually proposing this year. So that may allow us to ramp this up just a little bit quicker, I'm, I'm hoping that we can. In addition to going after the half-cent sales tax, which I, I hope will go forward, and we will take an active role in advocating for that here in the Tahoe region, we also might be contemplating, you know, in the near future, an increase in TOT. So I think, you know, these are some ways that, that we are looking at, how can we get to this even quicker than, say, the five years that are being planned here right now, if we can meet those constraints that we currently have in financing. I think really to get to the point, like I said, that we are incentivizing ridership, not only from our commuters, but from our visitors, we have to get to frequent, free, and fun. And that has been our mantra on this transit vision all along, and I'm so excited that we're contemplating adoption today. Thank you.
Good morning, Shannon Eckmeyer, League to Save Lake Tahoe. I wanted to thank Placer County and all the stakeholders involved in creating this update. We're very encouraged by this, and it's a great tool for us. Improving public transportation and transportation issues in general are a priority for the league in two thousand and sixteen. We're actively lobbying in both California and Nevada in finding funding solutions and sources to be able to improve things like you're seeing today, not only in Placer County, but region-wide. So we really want to be a stakeholder that can provide funding to Placer County to improve public transit so there is more ridership, it's more reliable, more accessible. So we think that this is a great first step, and stay tuned, we will be coming back before your board with hopefully more funding ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jamie Wright, with the Executive Director with the Truckee-North Tahoe Transportation Management Association. As one of the partners through the Resort Triangle Transportation Vision Coalition, our organization was founded in nineteen ninety due to the concerns of congestion in transportation here in our region, or what we call the Resort Triangle. Highway two-sixty-seven just came year-round this year, but that was seen as an unmet need within our community since two thousand and five. So it took eleven years to get it on the road, and I will tell you, that is one of our routes that has seen increased ridership this year and is doing extremely well. The new branding efforts, as well as year-round messaging and marketing, have really enhanced just the visibility of the buses and overall acceptance. But ultimately, to encompass a, a culture shift here in our region, it's really going to take increased efforts on transit, as well as frequency, free if we decide to go there, but to combat congestion, as well as stay competitive in a resort market, we really have to look at what others are doing, and they are, they're providing more transit, and it's free. So I really encourage the approval or adoption of this plan today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, please step forward and state your name?
Sorry, it's for short people.
It's all right, I'll try and be a little shorter. Thank you, I'm Mike Lavac, I'm the Executive Vice President of Squaw Valley Ski Holdings, and we operate Squaw Valley and Alpine Meadows Resorts. Squaw Valley and Alpine strongly support improvements to public transit, we think such improvements are absolutely critical to our competitive position as a destination, and we've seen a lot of improvements, both through TART service and through private transit in our region over the last decade. We're not good enough yet, we need to keep improving. Better public transit is good for the environment, it's good for our economy, and it's good for our business prospects at Squaw and Alpine. We have participated and sought to lead in this effort to create a regional transit vision over the last three years and more, and this effort has been informed by significant public and business participation, and all of that is contained in the revised plan that Gordon and LSC prepared for your consideration. We have also significantly financially supported public transit and plan to continue doing so. Our priorities at Squaw and Alpine, in order of importance, include expansion of two-half-hour service, especially along the eighty-nine corridor between Tahoe City and ultimately to Truckee. Also, expansion of summer half-hour service, of course, winter is our, our primary business time, but summer enhancements are also important. We think that evening service and potentially free service are relatively less important than getting to half-hour headways for our buses first in winter and then in summer. And I wanted to address a couple of questions that were asked by the supervisors. One, with respect to ridership, we think it's really key to have half-hourly service, and that will contribute to enhance ridership. There's a lot of people who are unwilling to ride the bus when it only comes by every hour, because that can be very inconvenient, especially if you miss the bus by a couple minutes and you're standing around for an hour waiting for the next bus. We know that people are far more likely to get on that public transit if it's coming every half-hour or even more frequently. So decreasing service headways is really important to our transit efforts. And then Supervisor Montgomery also asked whether we've coordinated our Squaw-Alpine transit efforts that we provide on a proprietary basis with TART, and we have absolutely done that. We coordinate connections with the TART stop nearby the bottom of Alpine Meadows Road, and to the point of TART's relative inflexibility, we recognize that. The, the bus has to run and meet a variety of objectives, and Alpine is only one, so we try and coordinate our service to match the, the timeline of the TART service rather than vice versa. Like to thank the board for considering this update and urge you to support it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lavac, before you go, I was in the village yesterday, and I want to compliment Squaw on the new carpool-only parking, which you've set aside, I believe, a hundred-and-twenty-five spaces for vehicles that hold four or more individuals, and I think that's a great step towards helping-
And I think that's a great step towards helping reduce traffic congestion.
Thank you very much. We've rolled that out both at Squaw and Alpine Meadows, and we do have those preferred locations. And we're going to police it on the weekends and hope that our skiers and riders adhere to it during the weekdays when we're not as busy. And we'll be rolling that out full-time next season as well, so thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you. My name is Nick Haven, good morning, I hope it's still morning. I'm the Transportation Planning Manager for TRPA, and we would just like to come here today to support this plan and hope you adopt it. It's a great step forward in transit planning for the Tahoe Basin. We look to hopefully partner with you to continue to build upon this five-year transit plan and actually look at a longer-range, 20-year vision where we can really start to talk about the partnerships necessary to get that resort-style transit that you're hearing, this vision plan that brought forward. And we definitely want to complement the county in building off that very well-vetted vision plan, and hopefully we can move forward together to implement. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, good afternoon. Tony Karwowski, Senior Manager of Transportation and Fleet Maintenance at North Star California Resort. We definitely encourage the board to take on this, the movement for the increased transit services here in North Lake Tahoe. Providing to our community this kind of transit system is incredibly important for our resorts, for our economic development, for our increased visitorship. The half-hour service is extremely important to us. Again, the frequency of these shuttles running will provide increased ridership in and of itself. On top of that, we would like to thank for the efforts for those involved for the year-round Highway 267 service, very important to us, also as a resort but as a community for the link between Kings Beach and Truckee, for Health and Human Services as well, an additional need that was met. Also, something that's very important with this system too, to us on that corridor, is to increase some earlier services as well. We do have unmet needs earlier in the day for employees to get work on time. So we do operate a pretty significant shuttle service at North Star on and off-site, and part of the off-site is backing up the TART system in overflow. We do have times when that service does not meet our needs, twice a day generally throughout the whole year. And in addition to that, we operate an early 6:00 AM run, and between those two runs, we move about 6,000 to 7,000 people over the course of the winter season. So there's still unmet needs in this system, although you might say eight and a half people per hour on one leg isn't important. The connectivity of the whole system is very important, so thank you for considering that.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll bring the action back to the board, which is to adopt a 2016 Tahoe-Truckee area regional transit plan.
Summons.
Okay. Moving in second, if all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we will have a status update on the Tahoe area projects. Paul.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Thompson with the Community Development Resource Agency. I'm here today to provide your board with an update of various projects that we're working on in the Tahoe area. We're going to start first with the Alpine Meadows-Squaw Valley area, beginning first with the Alpine Sierra subdivision. This project is a 33-lot subdivision. It also includes 14 half-plex residences on a 46-acre site. As far as status, there's been no change since your last update in January. The first administrative draft EIR has been reviewed by the county, and the draft EIR is tentatively scheduled to be released and circulated to the public this summer. Next project, the Palisades at Squaw Valley project proposes development of a residential subdivision, a total of 63 units, includes a mix of single-family residences as well as half-plex units located on a 19-acre site, and it's located at the entrance of Squaw Valley. As far as staff, status, an administrative draft EIR for the project has been submitted to the county and has been reviewed by the staff. Comments have been provided to the EIR consultant. It's anticipated that this project will be available, the draft EIR for this project will be available in late spring. Moving on to the Resort at Squaw Creek Phase 2A, this is a new project since your last update. The project includes 18 condominium units in a low-rise buildings adjacent to the Resort at Squaw Creek Golf Course. This project was first contemplated and approved back with the original Resort at Squaw Creek project that was approved back in 1985. As far as status, the project was presented and approved by the Squaw Valley Design Review Committee on February 4, 2016. The project was also presented to the Squaw Valley MAC as an information item, also in February. As there is a long history of an extensive set of conditions of approval associated with this project, the Staff Development Review Committee continues to work with the applicant to identify applicable conditions as well as environmental mitigations, as well as information necessary to satisfy these requirements. So with that, we're continuing, our review is ongoing on that project. Next project is the Base-to-Base Gondola. Since your last update, an EIR kickoff meeting was held. Discussion of whether this, whether or not this project is a traffic inducer or an amenity emerged as a priority topic at the meeting, which warrants additional analysis and discussion. The staff will continue to work with all parties to collect and quantify potential increases in visitation as well as any associated environmental impacts. Again, although this is, although there is an EIR and an EIS associated with this project, and they will be separate documents, in order to better serve the public, Placer County and the US Forest Service, we'll work together and have agreed on having a joint, jointly-held scoping meeting. There's two meetings proposed, one in the afternoon, one in the evening, and they'll be here, held right here on May 9 at the Resort at Squaw Creek, and it's anticipated that the release date for the notice of preparation will be April 20. Moving on to the White Wolf subdivision, this project proposes to create a subdivision on a 44-acre parcel just north of the Alpine Meadows Ski Resort. The proposal includes 38 single-family units as well as a clubhouse, lodge, chairlift, and associated seasonal recreational amenities. As far as status, there has been no change since your last update in January. We've had an initial pre-development meeting that was held in December, and at this time the county staff is waiting for a formal application supplemental. The Plump Jack Squaw Valley Inn project, as you're aware, proposes to demolish the existing 61-room inn and in its place, construct a new hotel, underground parking garage, a three- and a four-story residential building in its place. The administrative draft EIR has been received, it was received on March 30 and is currently being reviewed by the county staff. It's anticipated that this project will be, the draft EIR for this project will be ready for public review in late spring. Moving on to the Squaw Valley Olympic Museum and Winter Sports Heritage Center, this proposal is to construct a 15,000-square-foot museum along with a heritage center at the existing Squaw Valley Park. As far as status of that project, there's been no change since January, your last update. An initial pre-development meeting was held in January, and the applicants are currently preparing a formal application supplemental to the county. With that being said, when that application does get submitted, county staff will be sure to coordinate with the project applicant to ensure consistency with the countywide parks' master plan update that's currently in process. For the Village at Squaw Valley specific plan, since your last update, the county staff has received the final EIR for the project, and it's currently available for public review. It's likely that there will be a hearing before the Planning Commission set for late May, and then final action before the Board of Supervisors occurring this summer. Chalet Road Townhomes, this project proposes to demolish an existing lodge and construct 18 half-plex, half-plex units in its place. The project is, site is located on a 2.5-acre property in the Alpine Meadows and Alpine Meadows area. This is the site plan here. As far as status, a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for this project. The comment period ended on April 8. This project went to the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council on May 10, and we received a unanimous supportive approval. It's anticipated that the project will go before the Planning Commission for consideration at its May 12 meeting in Tahoe. So moving on to projects in the Marthas Valley area, beginning first with the Marthas Valley West specific plan. This project, since your last update, the staff and the EIR consultant continue to work on the preparation of the final environmental impact report for the project. It's anticipated that that document will be ready for public review by the end of this month. Once the final year, EIR is released for public review, the hearing will be set before the Planning Commission with final action before the board, again, occurring sometime this summer. Moving on to the Tahoe Expedition Academy project, which proposes development of a permanent, independent educational institution for approximately 350 students ranging from pre-K to 12th grade. The subject property comprises 42 acres and is located one-quarter mile southwest of the intersection of Highway 267 and Shafer Mill Road. As far as status, a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for the project and it's currently being circulated. The public comment area, public comment period ends on April 20. The North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council did consider the project at their April 14 meeting and did provide unanimous support for that project. So it's anticipated that this will be another project on the May 12 Planning Commission meeting here in Tahoe. Moving on to projects within the Tahoe Basin, beginning first with the Brockway Campground. So as your board is aware, the applicant proposes a project that comprises 550 campsites with amenities on a 120-acre parcel located near Brockway Summit and west of Highway 267. At your last update, it was incorrectly reported that the project was on hold, so while the applicant is primarily focused on the Marthas Valley West specific plan project, the review of the Brockway Campground is proceeding as well, and is currently focused on collaboration with Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, the EIR consultants, and Placer County staff on gathering documents necessary to commence the environmental review process. Moving, there's a, moving on to the Tahoe Cedars project, this is a new project since your last update. This project proposes removal of two existing single-family residential units and construction of a six-unit planned residential development in its place. It's located on the west shore in the Tohoma area. And as far as status, an environmental questionnaire was submitted in March for the project, and it's currently being reviewed by staff. It's anticipated that this project will be heard by the Planning Commission in the mid-summer to early fall timeframe. Moving on to Tahoe City, the Tahoe City Lodge project, as your board's aware, this project proposes to redevelop an existing commercial property into a 120-unit hotel lodge. That would include a mix of hotel rooms, one- and two-bedroom suites, hotel amenities, parking, as well as redevelopment of the existing clubhouse building and new, a new shared-use parking on the Tahoe City Golf Course site. As far as project status, the preparation of a EIR, EIS for the project is underway, and it's anticipated that that document will be released in late spring. So with that, that concludes my project, my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions, comments by the board? Jennifer.
I just had one clarification, Paul, on the Tahoe Cedars. I thought that was a hotel complex in that it had 26 or 29 TAUs associated with it?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Maybe, I could be wrong.
Okay. My mistake, I just thought it was a, that it was not actually residential.
I think that project is on the, I would say the mountainside, this proposal is on the lakeside. So I think the one you're talking about is, so, I think they're two different projects.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments, questions by members of the public?
Good afternoon, my name is David Stepper, I'm a resident of Squaw Valley. I am here representing a grassroots organization called the Friends of Squaw Valley, and I'm addressing the proposed expansion of the Village at Squaw Valley that you just heard about. I am also a member of the Squaw Valley MAC, but have been recused from voting on that project when it comes before the MAC in a few weeks. About one month or so ago, some associates and I came to talk to each of you individually about our views on the project, and we left off a position paper that expressed our opinion about the project mass and scale mostly, and included suggestions on conditions of approval we would like to see included in any final agreements. Since the time of that, those meetings, the final EIR has come out, as you just heard, a review of the documents, and it's about 4,000 pages, reveals two key facts. First, the developer did accept all but one of the recommendations from the Squaw Valley Design Review Committee, and those were written into Appendix B of the specific plan. The one exception concerned the size and location of the Mountain Activity Center or Adventure Center, which the Squaw Valley Design Review Committee advocated for a smaller height or being, or having it moved. And secondly, most every environmental concern, I think you've probably read in the local newspapers, expressed by the 350 comment letters have been pretty much dismissed. Our group will be addressing those at the Planning Commission meeting when the project comes before them in late May. So the position of the Friends of Squaw Valley, as expressed in our position paper, has not changed. We advocate that the Planning Commission and the board should require a reduction in size of the project in line with the preferred reduced-size alternative that was detailed in the draft EIR. We and you anticipate, I suspect, an impassioned plea by the developer that this reduction will not pencil out. I have brought copies of the position paper, which I'll hand out for you to review again in case you have misplaced it, and we appreciate that you would consider the views that are in there. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Isaac Silverman, and I'm the staff attorney for Sierra Watch. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm also here to talk about Squaw Valley. Ever since KSL Capital Partners purchased Squaw Valley Ski Corp., it sought to transform this region with development never before seen in the Tahoe-Truckee region. Despite overwhelming opposition, they want permission to build 1,500 new bedrooms, acres of 100-foot-tall high-rises, and rather incredibly, an indoor water park. I'm here- I'm here today to ask the board supervisors to stand up for Squaw Valley and the Tahoe Sierra, to say no to this proposal and to bring everyone together so that we can craft a plan for the future that actually makes sense, not just for Squaw Valley, but for all of them like Tahoe. You all know, this isn't the first time that I and many others have asked this board to say no to this development proposal. As David mentioned, last summer, an unprecedented three hundred and fifty-five individuals, agencies, jurisdictions, and organizations all commented on the draft environmental impact report. Ninety-seven percent either opposed the project due to traffic, pollution, noise, or other impacts associated with the project, or took issue with the adequacy of the analysis. Many did both. Since last summer, opposition has only grown. Sixty local businesses have signed a letter urging you to reject this proposal, including thirty-five in Tahoe City and Kings Beach alone. They are concerned about what this development would mean for their quality of life and also for the world-famous Tahoe experience upon which their livelihoods depend. Over one hundred and thirty people have sent emails to this board that were aware of expressing their concern over this proposal and our petition urging you to keep Squaw true has grown to over two thousand signatures. So although we've long asked this board to send a clear message to KSL Capital Partners that their proposal is unacceptable, some caution and patience from our supervisors, from the boards, totally understandable. Deep down, I think it was hard for us to believe that anyone could walk into Squaw Valley and think that a ninety thousand square foot, hundred-and-eight-foot-tall indoor water park is just what our region needs, or fail to see the folly of adding thousands of cars to area roads that were gridlocked more weekends than not this ski season. This development scheme is so clearly inappropriate and local opposition has been so strong that one can be forgiven for assuming that they would scale back their plans long before it reached this board. Instead, they've doubled down. The proposal submitted for consideration to the county, along with the final environmental impact report, it's virtually identical to the plan our community has so rambly rejected. It still calls for mansions in the Mount the Shirley Canyon. Not a single bedroom was removed. And while it will take us a little longer to fully analyze the three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five-page environmental report, it's already clear that only a small portion of flaws raised by the three hundred and fifty-five comments have been addressed. So I'm here today to ask the board to stop this madness. You can lead the effort to craft a plan for Squaw Valley that supports a thriving regional economy that respects our environment and protects our quality of life. Our entire community is asking for your leadership. Thank you.
Shannon Eckmeyer, Lead to Save Lake Tahoe. These comments are also on behalf of Mountain Area Preservation, who had to leave this morning. I'd like to echo the same concerns that were just made by Sierra Watch. All of our organizations met with Placer County staff twice, actually, over the past two months and explained it really seems that this final environmental review is being developer-driven rather than Placer County as minimal changes were made to the proposed project. Not only that, all of our concerns, as they relate to Tahoe impacts and traffic and mitigation measures, were also ignored. So we were told in our meeting last week that there is still a discretionary period where Placer County staff will continue to meet with our organizations and discuss concerns with your board and there is still time to influence the project. So we are hopeful that this is actually true and that this also occurs with the Marthis West specific plan. We're very wary about that final environmental review and coming out with the same project without any changes. So again, we, like Sierra Watch, just said, we hope that you guys can be leaders and actually influence project change rather than process it. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board regarding planned projects? Seeing none, we will now move on to an update of the groundwater plan for Marthis Valley. Brett.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman and Board Member Brett Story from the Community Development Resource Agency. Give you a quick update on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act here in the Marthis Valley Basin. Obviously, we're not here in that basin, but up in this region. And here's a map of the basin itself and evidence of several years of groundwater monitoring by the agencies that have been up here doing that. Has this as a very sustainable basin now and will continue to be in the future. I'll go into a little bit of that when I get to the Truckee River Operating Agreement. Under the program management right now, SEDRA staffing and support from County Council is what's going on now. It's not as expansive as our one in the western portion of the county, so for now we believe that will accommodate what the needs are up here. The agency itself, formation entities we're working with, obviously Placer County, Nevada County, the town of Truckee, Placer County Water Agency, the North Star Community Services District, and the Truckee Donner Public Utility District. As was shown on the map, we're a bi-county area so that we have to meet and inform this agency, taking all of those entities into account. There is some regional water coordination via the Truckee River Operating Agreement, or TROA, which is now final. It has gone into effect. There's actually an administrator maneuvering through all of those rules and regulations. And the net effect for the groundwater basin and really the area itself is that a limited amount of water can be utilized in the area and taken out of the basin itself, from both the river and the groundwater basin. So there are some rules that are set that keep us in check towards sustainability. So it's actually a positive thing. Right now, about a third of the groundwater is utilized each year, or can be utilized each year. And even in the last several years of drought, the groundwater tables have always come back up. It's a unique area and as a matter of fact, we made some comments to the state saying how unique it is that perhaps shouldn't even be under this state regulation, but we all know how the state deals with people who speak up, right? They give us more to do, just like here at the county. The plan itself has been in place for several years and is operating well and is in full compliance with all of the state regulations. So we perceive the future being much more of the same. We will now take those CASGEM requirements and meet to this new program and make sure that we meet all those requirements. There is a requirement for public outreach and it's actually a good practical use of all our times and efforts to understand the needs of the area and we are working on that now and that hopefully will be, I'll give you a timeline here in a sec of when we're going to complete that. There was a draft groundwater sustainability plan. Many of the agencies made comments, we did as well, and I spoke on behalf of both up here in Marthis Valley and in western Placer. And believe it or not, they listened a little bit. We're going to find out how much more tomorrow. There is a update by the Department of Water Resources to the Water Commission with some suggested changes based on people's input. So we probably won't get everything we asked for, but hopefully it'll be a little more clear and hopefully less expensive doing the right things rather than just something to put in a plan. A little bit about the timeline to meet this, we expect to have the boundary, it's really known boundary and the agencies are all known, there is some question of whether one of the entities stays in because they don't really have any groundwater rights. And so we're working through those issues. We hope to have that resolved by June of this year. We're already building a plan and preparing for that conduction of stakeholder outreach. We hope to have all of that concluded by this fall's timeframe to reach out to the community. And really, it's to get them to understand sigma, understand their effects, and take in all of their concerns before we create an agency that ultimately will have to create a plan. And of course, we will need to develop the bylaws, the governance, who the lead agency is, of forming this group. We've all anticipated that a simple MOU, not that a MOU is simple, but rather than move towards a JPA, that it really makes more sense and keep the cost down to make an MOU. And our attorney is actually working on a draft one now so that people can start looking at it. In that same process, once we find the Water Commission accepting the new regulations, we can then truly estimate the budget, how long it'll take, how much we'll have to spend in each agency, and we'll bring that, of course, back to you all for approval at some point. We hope to have that done by January. Then all of the agencies must agree, obviously, sign on to that agreement. We must, and we'll try to get that done by February, then there's a number of legal issues that, or resolutions, et cetera, that we would have to bring forward to the state. We hope to have all that done on or about March, April at the latest, to meet that June thirtieth deadline so that we're in full compliance with everything that's going on with this act. I would also like to point out, there are three other basins in the Tahoe area. They are not subject to this act, though, because they are what's determined very low or low priorities. One is in west Tahoe, one is in north Tahoe, and the other is here in Olympic Valley. Thank you. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Seeing none, any comments, questions from the public? Thank you, Brett.
Great, thank you very much.
Next item is North Lake Tahoe Resort Association update. Jennifer, are you, yes, you are.
Yes, I would just like to welcome JT Thompson, the Chief Marketing Director from the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, to provide your board with a biannual update on the marketing department activities. So he's going to give us a little bit of a, what they did over the winter period and a little bit of a preview for the upcoming summer term. So I would like to bring up JT to do that presentation. He's going to need this to be taller again, but.
I can talk.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, everybody. Some very exciting stuff I'll go through very quickly. I know time is of the essence, so we can move right into this. As Jennifer was saying, we are going to be just reviewing our winter results from 2015 as well as our summer strategic plan for 2016. Following the master plan for North Lake Tahoe, our goals and objectives are really to reach the consumer through consumer marketing, public relations, and social media. And maintain the North Lake Tahoe brand aesthetic with the look and the feel, with the beauty and all the activities that we have. The process varies slightly by medium, but it's overall, it's storytelling plus visuals equals conversions, meaning conversions, meaning getting people to stay in hotel rooms, basically to get heads and beds. With the consumer marketing, in the winter of 2015, we went one-hundred percent digital. This was a more cost-effective way for us to reach the consumer in Los Angeles and Southern California, which is a very expensive place to market because of the population. In public relations, we conduct a lot of FAMs to get the media up here. Once they're up here, they love the place so much, they write beautiful stories about it. In turn, that gets out to the consumer. And then in social media, we're utilizing the consumer stories and taking their photography and videos, as well as contesting to get those photography and videos to get them up here. Moving on, some of the other strategies within the leisure sales market, in the emerging markets, we're going after the Chinese market as well as the Mexican market, coinciding and working with Visit California and Visit Nevada. In conference sales, our market shift is primarily shifting towards going after more of the leisure luxury traveler, as well as the luxury conferences and incentive travel. In events, we have additional sponsorship opportunities. We've been able to secure the Spartan World Championships for 2016 for the next three years, as well as Tough Mudder. Those also coincide with shoulder seasons and demand seasons that we need rooms and visibility for the destination. And our visitor information services, we're trying to reach out to all the local event organizers to make sure that we have a visitor center presence to reach the traveler that we're not sure if actually would come into a visitor center. So we just want to make sure that all of our information is in their hands as well. The marketing review, this is the digital desktop and mobile banners that we have. This is a sample of those on all of them. You will click on those. If you could run, and it would show some of the videos that we've produced for this winter. If you could go back one and then play the telescope video, please. Great.
When your kid asks about the stars, do better than an app.
We were very excited about that, that did get a lot of publicity, but if you could also play the docs and the gadgets video as well.
Dear gadgets, you know I love you, but we're going to have to spend some time apart because winter is upon us.
Those are two of the four videos that we have on the different pre-roll and the desktop and mobile banners that we have. So within the advertising we did, if you could go to the next slide, or I'm sorry, I do that. The almost forty-seven million impressions, which is two-point-three times the benchmark within the industry. We were very excited about that and it did show us a lot of conversions within the website as well. This is the geek information that I love to page through. There's a lot more information on that, but this showed the different partners that we work with. What we utilize this for is to measure the productivity of each ad that we do place and the market that we place it in. And we can also target this through placements, measuring the view-through rates as well as the click-through rates, where the consumer goes from each ad that they've viewed. So it gives us some great information to move forward and make sure that we are tweaking our, tweaking our media to match the interest of the consumer. In winter media relations, Mother Nature helped us out quite a bit this year. We had a great snow season. The hotels and all the businesses were very happy with the winter that we've had. The early snow created high demand for stories throughout the country as well as throughout the world and we saw a lot of favorable editorial coverage on the destination itself. These are some of the different print advertising as well as online media reaches that we've received. These are primarily writers that we bring up, host for a couple of nights in the destination, show them everything that we have to offer, get them on the slopes or get them on the water, and they go home and write great stories for their readers. Media relations, we did a great job this year. We had over five million dollars in publicity value. With the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we spent in public relations and media, that's about a thirty-four-to-one return, which we were very excited about. And it reached over five-hundred-and-sixty-two million people. Our social campaigns, a story-driven, and we try and make sure that we are telling the story that the consumer has left with. So we use earned, rented, and owned media to post on our social. These are just two examples here. On the Facebook post from October second, we had over eighteen hundred likes and a hundred-and-twenty-eight comments and over, almost two hundred people shared that one post. Another example, the Instagram post, over twelve hundred likes, reached over almost fifteen thousand people. One of the best things that we're doing with social media right now is trying to gain followers because we know that that helps spread the word. We increased our media followers, our social media followers have increased by a hundred and seven percent over this period last year. So we're very proud of that. Moving into summer of sixteen, we are keeping and tweaking the digital media that we have to coincide with the statistics that we've received from the winter marketing. The only difference with this is that we are going ninety percent digital and with five percent radio and five percent TV, focusing on activities and music up here in the summertime. Expanding our mediums, went through that a little bit, but mostly interest-based mobile advertising. With the partners that we're going to be working with this summer, they can break down psychographic as well as geographic information of the person that's clicking on one button. So with the availability of that information, we're really able to drill down and target to the consumer that we're looking for, that will come up here, spend more money, spend more time, increase midweek heads and beds, as well as going after. more money, spend more time, increase midweek heads and beds, as well as going after filling the shoulder seasons. So we are continuously a year-round destination, keeping all of our merchants and all of our partners up here happy. Cooperative programs, we work with High Sierra Visitors Council, as well as Visit California and Travel Nevada, and the local business associations on plans like Peak Your Adventure, High Notes, and creating a more distinct shopping product. Our summer programs through media relations, just highlighting everything that we have here with Altral 2.0. Altral, the first Altral was very successful. We're going after Altral 2.0, expanding that program, and we know that we have, we're able to secure favorable editorial coverage to increase what we've already done. And then one of the things that we're moving into, just promoting all of this on our current social channels, but then we'll be also going into other apps like Snapchat, Google Plus, Pinterest, which we really haven't really focused on a lot, so we know that we'll be able to grow that quite rapidly. That's the presentation. If you have any questions or comments?
Questions, comments by the board? I see none. Thank you. Anyone from the public? Thank you very much.
Actually, I did have a comment. I wanted to say thank you very much. In terms of the focus on the music, something I would really encourage you to do is highlighting some of the smaller events. So I sort of book my summers around all the free music here in the area. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday each week, you can get free music all summer long, and I think that's something that visitors would love to hear, not just the larger events.
Great. And we are, we are focusing on that with High Notes.
Yeah. Concert on the Commons, Kings Beach Friday nights, even Truckee Wednesdays, which, you know, it's the wrong county, but that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we are going to receive an update about the delivery of services and programs. Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jennifer Merchant again, here with the County Executive Office at Lake Tahoe. Get my paper situated so it doesn't fly all over the podium. So I'm batting cleanup today. I know it's been a long day. I'll try to push through here, but yet keep, keep the discussion substantive, because there's a lot of good information to impart. So really, the purpose of today's presentation is kind of a 2.0 on Andy's presentation last year about the Eastern Placer County North Lake Tahoe region budget. So this is the next step on that budget analysis and really trying to set the framework for what is the context of North Lake Tahoe and what are the kind of services in North Lake Tahoe, and how do we decide what to provide and what to expand? So we'll be just going through exactly where we're looking at related to the geographic boundaries, population, and a lot of other data. Try to breeze through that fairly quickly so that we can get to the very important department snapshots and talk to you about what the departments are doing here in providing services and expanding services, projects, programs in the region. And then finally, I'll get to takeaways and happy to answer any questions and engage in discussion. So real quickly, this is the boundary, for the most part, that we're looking at. The Sheriff's Department pulls data a little bit differently, because their Tahoe Basin area does not include Donner Summit, but for all intents and purposes, what we're looking at today is coterminous with the 10% TOT collection area in Eastern Placer County that goes just west of Donner Summit. So a couple of slides from last year's presentation, just going to run through these, the total cost of services, and this is in fiscal year 1314, because we don't operate Tahoe on a budget like this. So it took a lot of time to pull that data, to get the 1314 data. It's not something we're proposing to do every single year. So this information, at least here, I'm showing you 1314 data from Andy's presentation last year. Total cost, 58,000. Of that, nondiscretionary revenue sources, 20 million and change. Of the discretionary revenue sources, just over $40 million, and you can see some of the key ones here. And I will dive a little bit deeper into the property tax and look at that historically and growth patterns, as well as TOT. So then the overall expenditure in the Tahoe region of $58 million in 1314 is inclusive of 20 million of nondiscretionary, 40, just under 41, and discretionary. And we do have that, the analysis outcome that's shown there, so money collected in excess of what was actually spent. And that, that is specific to services provided to Tahoe in the Tahoe area. So that $3 million can not only be looked at as potential fund balance, but it can be looked at as covering services that are countywide services, such as the treasure tax collector, the, you know, when we run campaigns, they're, they're run mostly out of the clerk's office in the Auburn area, so that's how you get that balance. So I want to talk a little bit about population and setting the context for the Eastern Placer County community, and I know that the numbers on these slides are very small, so I'm going to help you, because I couldn't add them up or see them very well. But I did want to get the census areas on the map so everybody could see it. So this is from the 2000 census, and you know, a lot of what I'm talking about here has been referenced earlier in the day. So it really pulls together the, I think, the context for the provision of service here in Eastern Placer County. So in 2000, we had over 17,000 residents in this area, nearly 18,000 residents. And you jump forward to census data from 2010, and the population actually shrunk. Gordon Shaw mentioned that in his presentation, shrunk by right, right around 20%, a little bit more than that, for a variety of reasons that I'm not going to get into the conjecture or the folklore that we talk about here in the community. Some people selling out, some people moving on, looking for different jobs, brighter horizons, sick of the snow, not enough snow, whatever the reason may be. But certainly, you know, a population influx here. And then you look conversely at the countywide population, you notice that during one of the periods of greatest growth countywide, this is when in the North Lake Tahoe region, we experienced this 20% dip. So it's, it's actually quite, quite an interesting data point I found. And then in addition, you've got visitation growing from 2002 to 2012. And these numbers were pulled from the Dean Runyon Survey that the Resort Association funds every few years. And so, you know, that was, again, up in the neighborhood of 20-something percent over a 10-year period. So it does make one wonder what's going on. You've got, you know, 822,000 up to over a million. And actually, interestingly, there was a reference earlier to the cellphone data, and they are using data now, tracking via the GIS that everybody has on their cellphone, where everybody is going. And so we actually think we may have better, newer data that demonstrates that these visitation numbers that are really kind of interpolated from TOT and average number of people per unit and that sort of thing, that we may have better data that shows that the visitation is even higher than we had once thought. So we're going to be following up on some of those analyses that have been done through the Tahoe Transportation District to verify that. And then, of course, that, that has an impact on how we provide services here. So again, and just comparing to Placer Countywide, both on operating revenues and then expenditures on the next slide, the cost, or the revenue that comes in per person is nearly four times per person in this area. And there, you know, certainly a lot of reasons for that. A lot of it has to do with the fact we have a lot of homes that are not populated. So if those homes are actually populated, that number would be a little bit different. So I don't want to give you the impression this tells some fantastic story, but it's certainly something, again, that feeds into why we do things maybe a little bit differently here sometimes, because as you heard when I presented back in January about some, some of the data related to housing and demographics, the, the number of people live here, who live here and are living in our homes is, is very insignificant compared to the second homes. Over 60% of our homes are owned by people who do not live in the community. So on the expenditure side, something fairly similar, directly related to the revenue in many ways, but also indicates that we do have a higher level of service cost in some areas, and a cost of service provision to a very small, geographically distinct or remote area of an unincorporated community. So over $4,000 per person it costs to provide our services versus just over 1,000 elsewhere in the county on a per capita basis. And here's a snapshot on Tahoe area property tax distribution. So we use those same 88 tax rate areas that fed into the analysis that Andy's team and county staff worked on last year. And you can see the, the increase from 1415 to 1516, nearly 9%, I believe, as I calculated, is one of the bigger jumps that we've seen in the last decade. So certainly continuing to gain property tax revenue as a significant amount of second homes are built, really mostly in the Martas Valley, and that, that'll show up later in our C-Drop permit and building inspection numbers as well. But fairly significant increase after not quite a precipitous drop as we saw in the rest of the county. Also growing at a high rate, and just note on this last bar for 1516, that's year-to-date. So that includes through the first two months of the calendar year, about three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year. So TOT continues to grow as visitation grows, as property tax revenue grows, as population shrinks. And now wanting to get into a little bit about how we do provide services and how we're focusing on providing services in Eastern Placer County. This slide really demonstrates to me the county's commitment to providing local services locally when it's practical. I would like to note two locations specifically. The Placer County Administrative Center in Tahoe City is a purchase building that county has invested in, in the downtown of Tahoe City, to indicate to the community that we find being a present, presence and a part of the community, something that's very important. Also, if I can get that thing to work, over this end of town, actually, there's the breakout here in the inset, the Placer County offices, the Tahoe Engineering Design Division in Tahoe Vista, they used to actually operate out of an office in the town of Truckee, which was, some people didn't care for that. So when the opportunity arose, the county did purchase a building in Tahoe Vista. I really think it's, it's been meaningful for the people working in that office to have access, especially to the Kings Beach Commercial Core Project and other adjacent projects, and really being a part of the community by having our, our offices, facilities as nearby to where the work is actually getting accomplished and, and who we're doing the work for, whom we're serving. On, on the topic of employees, it's, it's interesting that the numbers are quite disparate, and we've talked about at the last meeting, the figures in countywide versus in Tahoe, much smaller number of folks serving the, the community here, but the, the path really is quite similar. They mirror each other, even though the numbers are at a much different scale. So 134 employees total this current fiscal year, positions filled, and we're expecting, expecting a moderate increase of filled positions in the coming fiscal year in a couple departments. Some of our departments do use the, their Tahoe area as a discrete budgeting tool, so I was able to pull some really good data from some departments, first off being the Tahoe Sheriff's Office. So this is one of our, our kind of snapshot-focused departments here. Do, the, the two, the difference between those two lines there, the top blue line is total sheriff allocations, and then the bottom line is the share of that, that our DSA, so our sworn deputies allocations. You see that dip there, and that was the year that we changed our dispatch services. So it was for a discreet and specific purpose. It wasn't because of, of the economy or anything like that. It was a change in how we're providing our dispatch services. And you see the sheriff's to budget over the 10 years, last 10 years, increasing in six, seven, and then, you know, after a small dip due to the economy, really kind of leveling out and just having moderate increases year over year. And another one here that, that really kind of, I think, speaks to, you know, the kind of services that are provided in our community. It's, we had a big jump in 1314, a very slight drop-off in, in 1415. The figure, again, on the dips down doesn't result, does not mean that it's a dip in calls. This is just year-to-date, and this is a calendar year chart that was provided to us. So that's just two months' worth of service. So you kind of extrapolate that out, it looks like it could be a year that potentially could be higher, because they do have peak seasons at the sheriff's department. It really kind of indicates that while they have a, a base level of service that seems to be attached to the number of residents that lives in the community and law enforcement calls related to that, they, a lot of their calls peak when we have the peak tourist seasons. So when we have big snow years or big visitation years, their service calls increase. And, and I do want to talk a little bit about the sheriff's department and their sincere interest and, and work effort in trying to ensure that services here do meet the, the community standard and the community needs. So a couple of examples, in talking to Captain Dennis Walsh here at the Tahoe City substation, they're actually getting grant money to replace a 25-year-old van, because it's technologically kind of really outdated. But the van can be used to be an onsite dispatch center, so in cases of emergencies or special events or rescues and, and specific responses, they can get out there and they work with the Tahoe Nordic Search and Rescue, as well as the Countywide Search and Rescue. And this is a piece of equipment that is dedicated to the North Lake Tahoe area because of the type, type of equipment and the, the kinds of services that this community needs. So in recognizing that they are working to replace that piece of equipment. Also, last year's purchase of the boat replacement, they've had a boat on the, on the water for a long, long time. The new boat is going to have specific abilities that the old boat did not have, and a lot of it is because of the types of, of incidents that they're seeing out on the lake, where they've got traumas that they can now respond to, because they've got onboard equipment that can help respond to that. They can do water rescues and work on the myriad special events. So again, growing services and really providing services that the community needs and desires. And when I talked to Dennis, he, he is also considering using that kind of, that same mindset and figuring out, okay, that landscape is changing, how do we deploy our staff that meets the needs of, you know, maybe growing resorts, smaller, long, full-time, year-round resident populations? So he's very mindful of that and is going to be considering that in the future, as well as working on the update of the emergency response plan. I wanted to talk about Health and Human Services here, because I know that there were, some people in the community weren't very satisfied with our decision to close the Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter and engage in a partnership with the town of Truckee, with the facility in Truckee. But I would, I want to say that in the first six months anyway, the project is, is a true poster child for responding to a small community's needs and providing a level of service that's actually greater than what we were providing before. So this is a real good story for how we're doing business differently in North Lake Tahoe to improve the provision of service. So we've got some great stats here. The field patrol time has increased by 33% because they're not in the building, trying to deal with the problems in an old building. And the second bullet point seems a little counterintuitive, given that. And the second bullet point seems a little counterintuitive, given that, but they've actually issued fewer citations, 28% fewer citations, because they're able to spend time in the community, talking with people, and it's not just a show up in a rush and give a citation. You know, they're issuing the little Placer branded doggy bag containers. I'm not sure if, it makes me laugh every time I think about that one, but it's working. So they've got people doing their duty and taking care of their dogs on the beach now more than they ever have before. So the interactions with the public, because of the time that they're spending in the community, have been much more positive. They have 32 animals whose owners have saved $300 by the spay and neuter services that are provided in Truckee. We did have two animals returned home on the free ride home program, and to date, in excess of what we expected, over $75,000 cost savings in the first six months. So this is a real good story on why we may partner with other adjacent jurisdictions in providing services in the region. Health and Human Services in other departments, we've got CalFresh applications, CalWorks applications, very interesting, the CalFresh programs specifically, I've got some interesting statistics on this. And again, I apologize for that big dip-down in the bottom year. That's just because it's a year-to-date, not because we've had a lower caseload. We expect it actually to increase in the current fiscal year, excuse me. So you notice that the CalFresh applications, and that is kind of for, in terms that all of us know what that means, it is the food stamp program. So those are continuing to grow, and that's interesting when we're seeing, you know, higher property tax revenues and maybe other indicators of wealth and economic development. You've got a community here in North Lake Tahoe that is still at a much higher rate, in fact, almost twice as much as the rest of Placer County utilizing these assistance services. So that was a very interesting takeaway in working with Health and Human Services staff about the provision of services here has actually grown in comparison to the rest of the county. I didn't have time to get the dental clinic and the health clinic stats on the slide, but I do want to point those out, too. They have both shrunk a little bit over the last 10 years, mostly in part because we don't provide services to out-of-county residents anymore. So we had a lot of people coming over from Incline Village and some people from Nevada County, because we were the closest clinic, and we're not providing services to them. So there were some dips around, 25% at the clinic overall, and a little bit less than that at the dental clinic. But still, you know, more than thousands of clients served each year. So we get back to kind of the economic development pieces, and this is the amount that we budget in our county budget to go back to the North Lake Tahoe community. It's a bit of a misnomer here where it says an LTRA budget. Not all of that money is directly budgeted into their contract, but into the Lake Tahoe Tourism Promotions Fund. And you see that, and this one goes back farther than any one, because I had some really good data on this and all kinds of old records in our office. So '96, '97, just over $3 million of TOT revenue put back into the community. And then you fast-forward to today, and it's nearly $9 million of TOT money put back into our community, invested by your Board of Supervisors. And this is general fund money. It's, you know, money we could be spending elsewhere, but we are deciding to return it to source so that we can do marketing to draw more people into the town, and we can provide transit services and growth in transit service and growth in capital projects. So this is a pretty interesting upwardly mobile chart here. And I do want to talk about the ability of the TOT funds to leverage other funds. I think you may have heard Ron Trebus say this to you before, but since 1996, nearly 100 visitor-serving capital projects have been completed with that 2% increase in TOT, with over $32 million in TOT funds spent since 1996, leveraging $235 million in other funding sources. So that investment that your board makes in this community grows sevenfold to identify other funding sources that are going back into that community. So I'd probably say, anywhere else, that's a pretty darn good investment. And it's a good investment here. You heard some of this information from Ken Graham and Gordon Shaw earlier, but the numbers weren't particularly attached to it. So I do want to make you aware of this. The growth in the transit system that Placer County has invested in, in part with TOT dollars and in part with other revenue sources, over the last 10 years is quite significant. It has grown in 10 years on annual expenses to transit of nearly $2 million, and it will probably exceed $2 million in transit system growth this year, as Sandy alluded to, once we get the recommendation from the Resort Association for additional transit system improvements. And during that same period, we've expended over $10 million on capital projects that are directly benefiting transit, such as the Transit Center in Tahoe City, other shelters, the branding, replacement of aging fleet, et cetera. This is a crazy slide. I won't read them all, I promise. Really, the most important thing is that little highlight at the bottom, and this demonstrates nearly, well, over a quarter of a billion dollars that are being funded right now or planned for potential future funding in eastern Placer County. So this is a huge array of projects, from water quality to transportation, to bike trails and that sort of thing. But this was pulled out of our capital plan, and this is a significant current and future investment that Placer County is making in the region. Some of this includes TOT money and other funding sources. So it's a variety of sources, including state, federal grants, all sources, general fund as well. We're also expanding economic development, you know, really in the wake of the demise of the redevelopment agencies, have been really focused on how can we expand economic development and investment in the communities. You heard a lot about that this morning, so I'm not going to go through that all over again. We are participating with business associations on specific economic vitality in our Tahoe Basin Town Center communities of Tahoe City and Kings Beach. We're looking at a potential assessment district in Tahoe City to help fund maintenance of sidewalk expansion that will be part of the Fanny Bridge project, collaborating with TRPA to help break down barriers to development. And we're also working in our department to facilitate the sale of the three successor agency properties, which will ultimately result in new projects and further economic investment in our communities. CEDRA is also part of our economic development strategy in North Lake Tahoe, and also in providing a higher level of service to folks doing everyday projects. We've been working with the North Tahoe Fire Protection District and have implemented a North Tahoe Fire Front Counter Tuesday program. We're doing over-the-county counter Tuesdays where people can come in and get quick permits within one day, as opposed to waiting for sometimes a lengthy back-and-forth project process. We are working on fee estimators. We've done one for Tahoe City Lodge, was our kind of initial pilot program, and we're hoping to get that on our website. So when somebody considers doing a project in Placer County, they can put in their project parameters, and the fee estimate comes out the other end. So something in process right now to improve transparency to our permitting process. We're also working on basin-wide permits to pull in other jurisdictions and refining our special event permitting process with assistance from the Resort Association. And I've got some stats on CEDRA here. It's kind of daunting that an office of less than 20 people can process 1,300 permits in one year, and they'd probably agree with that. It's a pretty big number, so a small, tight, strong operation in the CEDRA office, and it's part of the reason we continue to want to make these process improvements, so that they can continue to achieve those high numbers. But certainly also indicates an interest in developing in the Tahoe Basin an investment. And then even crazier, the number of building inspections performed, and I want to make sure I get this right, that the mighty staff of six people this year projected to perform 32,000 building inspections. So it's a huge number. These guys are busy. They have plotted out routes every single day, and they are really succeeding to provide a high level of service and to meet the demand that we have in our Tahoe region. So I've got some key takeaways here for discussion. Really, the revenue sources continue to show healthy increases in property tax and TOT both. And there's a typo, my fault, I don't even know if it's a typo, but on that second bullet there, the full-time resident population is decreasing, not increase. And then, you know, with that backdrop of the growth in the Bay Area market share, so visitation coming up largely from the Bay Area, also attracting destination visitors, growth in our share of housing market being second homeowners. So, you know, how do we provide that level of service and continue to expand and meet the needs? And then, really, the bottom line is that the county services in the North Lake Tahoe region are increasing, they're changing every year based on analysis done by staff and the folks preparing budgets to meet the needs and achieve environmental and economic development and other goals. So I've got a whole list of things that we're here focusing on, but clearly, we're growing our services and our projects in order to serve the community in eastern Placer County. Did want to draw your attention to this really cool storyboard here that will be on our website, it was a handout at today's meeting, and it's really a snapshot of all of the overly number statistics that I provided during the presentation. But we'll have this up on our website and available for folks outside of the board meeting room as well. And happy to answer any questions or engage in discussion.
Jack? Does anyone else have any, Jennifer?
I do. I want to thank you for pulling this together, because it's always, you know, a bit of a quandary for all of us up here and also in Auburn, to really understand the context of Tahoe, and particularly as how it relates to the rest of the county. Some of the things that you identified, you and I have talked about the loss of permanent population and what that means, not just to our economy, even though we see growth in property tax and in TOT. With the decrease in permanent population, we see long-term businesses struggling to stay alive because they don't have the shoulder-season support anymore. One of the things that's very concerning to me is the increase that we have in people needing social services up here, and that really does relate to higher costs of living, as you identified, and lower wages. And we really need to figure out how to get a better handle on that. Otherwise, frankly, we're going to continue to see our permanent population decrease. There was a number earlier that said we're thinking that we're seeing about a 5% increase in population. Was that just in the Tahoe Basin, or was that in the greater region?
That's, I believe that's in the Tahoe Basin only. It's really hard for us to pull that census data on something that's smaller than countywide. They're really good at the big numbers, but not that great at the small ones. And I believe the one that Gordon spoke of earlier was the Tahoe Basin only, that I think TRPA gets somehow.
Yeah. And I'm really delighted that you highlighted how much CEDRA is doing with so little up here. I mean, it's an unbelievable amount of work that is getting done out of that office, but that's true for all our departments up here. I think whichever department you pulled out and took a look at, you would see those same sorts of really high-volume numbers with very few employees. I took the opportunity to just run a percentage on this employee positions filled chart, and our high of employment in Placer County, interestingly in eastern Placer County, was in 2003, 2004, when we had 170 employees. We're now down to 134. But I just took 2007, 2008, which was the peak of the county, and we're back to 90% of that peak at the county level. We're back to 82% here in Tahoe, even though we're seeing these dramatic increases in service needs. And that's at 134 employees right now. We would need to get back to 157 employees here to get to that same 90% that we see countywide. Just food for thought, a code compliance officer might be one of those positions, not to sound like a broken record.
I think I heard that.
But I'm going to. One of the things that I don't see in this, either in the Sheriff's Office snapshot or in our Public Works Facilities North Tahoe Area Projects list, going to be a broken record again, Sheriff's Substation and Courts, don't see that anywhere in there. It's an identified need, it's been identified for a very long time, maybe, oh, there it is, site acquisition, I lie, it is in there. Sorry, David, didn't mean to get you outraged there. Wanted to make sure that we are really looking at that. Part of your key takeaways, I just want to give you my sort of apocryphal idea of what we're seeing up here, is in relation to the decrease, again, in full-time residents and the increase in second homeowners. What I hear, and I know what Steve hears, is the second homeowners who have bought in up here, particularly in the last 10 years, have a much higher expectation of level of service than the long-term residents who live here. And so they are having a much more difficult time dealing with the constraints of the county and the services, both the services and the personnel we provide, and that's kind of neither here nor there, but it is absolutely something that we have to deal with. I think Peter Kratz probably sees it at DPW. I know CEDRA sees it, you know, at their front counter, is it's just a higher level of expectations for service. You know, people who have moved from, you know, Davis or bought a second home up here, you know, they don't understand why they don't have sidewalks and streetlights and, you know, 24/7 snow removal when it's snowing. So that's just something for us to think about, is, you know, do we meet those expectations? And if so, how do we meet those expectations? I think some of the growth in revenue that we're seeing up here could be reallocated to some of those unmet needs, whether it's employees or services, but again, just food for thought. But I'm very impressed by the amount of thought and work that has gone into this, and I just want to say thank you very much, because I know you've been quite ill, and this has been a fairly monumental task. So thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. I did want to add a little bit of context on that number of employees, and I have the employees broken out by department, so can see the increases and decreases in each department. And a majority of that difference between that 170 peak you referenced and today's 134, we had a large number of building inspectors back when there was a big rush on development inside the Tahoe Basin. And we did lay off employees years ago, and most of those people were building inspectors out of this Tahoe office. And we have really been, I would say, Tim Wagner and Michael Johnson have taken a lead on really trying to strategically and very carefully surgically get in there and put in, you know, one or two more at a time, so we're not growing the need that we can't sustain, and providing some level of service for large projects that are done by contract and that sort of thing. So I'm not sure that it's an indicator of, well, we're not going to be back to normal, because that was probably a little bit too high to have a healthy, you know, long-term employment. So we're just being very strategic and surgical about when we do make increases, that they are for things that are sustainable.
Yeah, and that's actually why I looked at that 2008 number, which was lower than that 170.
I see.
The other question that I had, and I'm sorry, I forgot about it, is earlier in one of the presentations, but it relates to this presentation, we had a discussion about trying to make the process at CEDRA smoother and help people move through the development process. I thought we had done that with our Ombudsman Program. What happened to our Ombudsman Program?
Yeah, I'm not sure I can answer it directly. I mean, you know, that we always strive to assist, and we do have an Ombudsman. Steve Bionna in the Tahoe Office works to assist people who are having problems get through the process. But, you know, it's more than just assisting somebody when they have a problem, it's trying to address the problems in the bigger picture, so we don't even get people to that point. So that's more of a, you know, a problem resolution, as opposed to a bigger-picture, long-term process improvement. So they're kind of related, but not a hundred percent. So, they're kind of related, but not 100%.
Okay, thank you.
And some of the process improvement work that Chris Perry has been working on out of our office related to economic development, and in working with Paul Thompson directly, is really in that kind of bigger-picture, long-term thing.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification, because I'm not sure why I sort of thought the Ombudsman was playing that role already, but it sounds like it's a much more reactive position than proactive.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members? Anyone from the public? CNN, thank you very much, look forward to, like, annual type of refreshing of all of this.
Part three, even better than part one, as always.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The board will now adjourn to closed session.
The board is adjourned to closed session. The board is adjourned to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss two items of litigation, Bjork versus County and Boone versus County. Also, the board will have a conference with real property negotiators to discuss a property in North Auburn and the property listed on the supplemental agenda in the city of Roseville. And finally, the board will do a public employee performance evaluation.
Counsel, report up.
In closed session, the board had a conference with legal counsel regarding Karen Bjork versus County Placer, gave direction to counsel. In another litigation matter, Doris Boone versus County Placer, the board gave direction to counsel. Board also had a conference with its real property negotiators regarding a property in North Auburn owned by the Ost's. Board gave direction to its labor negotiation team, real property negotiation team. And then, another real property negotiation regarding property in the city of Roseville, the board gave direction to its real property negotiators. Board also conducted a performance evaluation, no action was taken on any of that item.